We have a lot of school committee meetings coming up. We actually have a school committee meeting every Thursday into March, and so we will be here every week if people want to keep coming. We also have a number of Capitol -- we have -- all of our subcommittees are meeting over February. The superintendent's search process is ongoing, and so we have some meetings coming up for that. There will be a review of the resumes that are being submitted, and so that process is well underway. I think that if we are able to get to it, we have an update on that later in our agenda. The Driscoll Building Committee is going strong, and then we have a number of community events and a great, you know, the Spelling Bee and Steps to Success, and our celebrating teachers. So if people start marking that on the calendars, we'd love to see everybody there.
All right. If I could, I have one thing. Unfortunately, it's during when we have a school committee meeting on February 6th, the Brookline Mental Health Center is having their women at the center, and Judith Fierst is their speaker, the writer and --
The author?
The author, yeah. And I'm really sorry, because I really wanted to go to that, but I will be here. But I just want other people to know that there is that opportunity, and it's that night, and that's all.
Thank you, Ellen. Okay, we have our consent agenda. Did we have some questions about the -- any of the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, I was looking for some clarification on items six, sorry, six, seven, and eight on the administrative business consent agenda regarding the Brookline High School expansion change orders.
Is Ms. Norman here that she's able to answer those questions? Okay. We will wait on those, for Ms. Norman to be able to answer those. Ms. Wolfdekoof is not feeling well, so she's not here this evening, but we can get the answers for you. Thank you, Mary Ellen. We had some questions on the items related to the high school project on the consent agenda.
Okay, so, actually, I can help with one of them. The force account on the MBTA, or I can help somewhat, and maybe enough to be dangerous on this one, is for the diversions, so that we can build over the MBTA, and they require a certain amount of money to be put aside for the diversions. The force account, as part of the force agreement, the town is required to fund the account for the construction-related MBTA support, diversion, flagmen, et cetera. The funding request is through the end of 2020, so it's for the full year.
And is this within the budget, and is just being moved into the force account at this time, and is still part of the budgeted amount?
Correct. I don't know if it's the exact budgeted amount. I know they're doing some value engineering on the project, too, but in order to do what we plan to do, you have to have these diversions. They are also trying to piggyback on MBTA construction that's happening upstream, or downstream, or wherever, so that when the MBTA is already doing their diversion and paying for the buses.
Do you have any details on the Skanska change order for seven million?
This is actually, if I can?
Yeah, go ahead.
I do know this one. This is for bidders, what are they called? Excuse me, I'm sorry. Bids that went out and came back for doors, frames and hardware, drywall, all those things that we need. So what's been happening here, instead of having one contract price, we've been bidding out things as we go along to make sure we have the things when we need them, and this is part of the actual --
Budgeted item.
Budgeted items.
Are the bids coming in over or under?
So some --
Over.
Some have come in over, a couple have come in under, but for the most part, they're over. And they know that, the building committee is aware of that. There was a meeting last night. Mary Ellen, were you there at the meeting last night?
I was late for, because I was at BEU negotiations.
Yeah, and I wasn't able to make it, so I -- but my understanding from the building commission is that they -- everybody is aware of it and is working hard, both the contractor, the CM at risk, the -- our OPM, our owner's project manager, and the architect to find savings throughout the buildings to be able to account for all the increase in cost that for doing business in Boston. It's not just us that is experiencing that. I heard the same thing from other communities, buildings out for bid, or are working now in construction, and everything seems to be coming in about 10% higher. That's part of the reason that we assumed that amount for Driscoll, so that we wouldn't be caught in this. There wasn't that assumption three years ago when we were putting together the numbers for the high school.
We can ask for a report next week at the school committee, but the project is over budget.
That's a good idea. I think we should probably, maybe it's time for them to come to us and talk a little bit about where they are, schedule and costs. I think that would be a great idea.
Fine with the third item, third one?
That was one and two, the second one was smaller. The William Ron contract was 11,000, it was a small --
That has to do with sort of as you're entering into an old building, old structure, you're going to run into a number of different things that are unforeseen and not known, so that basically what that covers is some additional design work that is needed to change drawings.
So we'll ask for, I don't, Ms. Quinn, we haven't posted the agenda for next week, have we? Okay, thank you. All right. With those, are there any further questions on the consent agenda? Yes, Ms. Napolini?
I just have one more. Under the, there's a grant acceptance for the Mass Cultural Council, and I'm just, I've been looking through it, and it's a dense document looking, and it's an exciting thing to support a resident poetry grant, and that's exciting, and I want to accept the grant, but I was just curious about what, who we were bringing in.
Do we name Mrs. Gittens on that? Dr. Gittens, Dr. --
Yeah, yeah, that was just more of a, I was wanting to know, so that I could be educated about it. Okay. It's exciting, I'm very excited about it, so, okay.
We'll get back. All right, so, but that, you said that does not delay your voting on?
No.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda. Do we have a second, Mr. Perman? All right, all of those in favor? All right, that's unanimous?
Oh, I, if I could.
Do you need to?
Yeah, I think we should congratulate the squash team, too, for going to nationals.
Okay.
I think that's really important.
Great. Excellent. All right, so we have a presentation today on, from some of our students at Pierce School on vaping. Welcome, thank you for being here.
Hello, my name is Jamie Ertz, and this is Josephina Valenzuela. We are eighth graders at the Pierce School. Thank you for giving us the time to speak to the school board today about the civics project we completed last fall. We ask you to implement an ongoing education program in schools to stigmatize vaping. Two thousand one hundred seventy-two, that's the current number of long injury cases so far caused by e-cigarettes. For a project in our eighth grade civics unit, we were given the opportunity to address an issue in our community that we cared about. Our class, especially those who have siblings at Brookline High, noticed the impact of vaping in the community and decided the issue needed to be addressed more thoroughly. E-cigarette use has increased by 900% in U.S. high schools in recent years. This is a problem, because no one really knows what the long-term consequences of vaping will be, especially on people who start in their teens. Research shows that negative reinforcement has a longer lasting impact than direct punishment. Therefore, we urge you to support our effort to stigmatize the use of vaping through an ongoing educational campaign in Brookline schools to lower the use of vapes among high school students and young adults.
Currently, there are some education-related solutions that have been conducted at the high school and middle schools. In the past months, there have been two events hosted by a speaker for the Care and Center, one of a group of 250 students, less than 9% of the total population of BHS. There was another presentation for parents and caretakers. This presentation will be repeated again later this year. The BHS staff is also working with peer leaders and the BHS librarians to push an educational campaign on our students about the dangers of vaping. There is also an addition to the health and wellness curriculum on our vaping education. Lastly, there are stickers and information in bathrooms around the school.
This may seem like a lot, but really, it's multiple small efforts, and not enough to provide strong negative reinforcement to students. The educational programs presentations are only once a year for the parents and do not reach everyone, and from the information we gathered, the educational campaign isn't even certain to occur, as it is only being pushed by BHS librarians and peer leaders. Also, a short unit on vaping is not long enough to solidify the ideas it might be trying to teach, and stickers in the bathrooms aren't enough to solve a crisis like the one we're facing.
Data from another study conducted by mass.gov shows that in Massachusetts, 41% of high school students reported ever using e-cigarettes. The current use of e-cigarettes is almost three times greater than the current use of traditional cigarettes, cigars, and smokeless tobacco combined, 11.4 in total. Specifically in Brookline, the daily use of e-cigarettes and vapes, according to the Healthy Brookline survey from last year, is up 2% from 2015, over 200 more students a year. Our class also conducted a survey amongst seventh, eighth, and twelfth graders which backs this data. Our survey of BHS students revealed that 27% of students know someone who vapes regularly.
For all these reasons, we need to implement an ongoing education program in schools to get rid of these numbers and truly make a difference. The current solutions aren't doing enough. Thank you for giving us your time and attention.
And we have a public comment this evening. Thank you, Ms. Quinn.
Yes, Ms. Nabel, are you signed up for public comment?
Excellent. Of course. Thank you.
The town meeting has voted to change the name, has voted to name the Coolidge Corner School for Florida Ruffin Ridley, an outcome I supported and celebrate. But unaddressed so far is the division created between those who supported the name chosen and those who favored Ethel Weiss. What remains is for us to recognize the service of Ethel Weiss, a longtime Brookline resident, loved and respected by generations of Brookline students at the former devotion school. Because of Ms. Weiss's special connection to the school, it seems appropriate that some permanent and public recognition be accorded her and be located in that building. The following suggestion is directed to you because it is the school committee that determines the naming of spaces within schools. Spaces that might be named after Ethel Weiss include the auditorium, school library, cafeteria, and playground. Whichever is chosen, I recommend a prominent display be established in the space, unless an outdoor space is chosen, consisting of a cabinet permanently hung on the wall containing, but not limited to, the following: a plaque of Ethel Weiss's name and the reason for the award, a formal photograph of her, pictures of her store, both exterior and interior views, as passersby and students would have seen it, a picture of her special Ten Commandments as she posted them in the store, a copy of the award presented her by Brookline Public Health Department commending her for refusing to offer candy cigarettes for sale in her store, quotes solicited by the school committee from current students and alumni about how Ethel Weiss affected them. If the number of responses exceeds the space available to display all of them at once, the remainder could be kept in a decorative box in the case to be switched out periodically for display. Any other relevant items the planners might choose, and if an outdoor space is selected for naming, a location inside the building to contain the above display would need to be chosen. Whatever space the town chooses to recognize Ethel Weiss's effect on the lives of devotion Coolidge Corner students, the sooner the form of recognition is defined and begun, the sooner begins the mending of the divisions that have accompanied the renaming of the school. I suggest separate ceremonies for the two naming celebrations, perhaps six weeks apart, to give each celebration a separate identity, avoiding diminishing either the historical significance of the naming of the Coolidge Corner School after Florida Ridley, or the heartfelt tribute of the naming of a space within the school after Ethel Weiss. I think you've already received a letter from me making this naming recommendation. The letter also includes some suggestions related to the planning process for the two ceremonies, but I won't take up public comment time to go into those. Thank you for your time. I hope you will decide to name a space within the Ridley School after Ethel Weiss.
So, I just wanted to, we do have a number of people who are signed up for public comment, and so as we, as we have to do sometimes, we will be limiting public comment to three minutes per person. Ms. Fetterspiel will not be, it's not phone calls that she's receiving at the table, that's actually, she's our timekeeper, and so when you hear that noise that sounds like a phone call, it is actually, or a three-minute timer, and so please do be respectful of the others who are here to speak, and we also have just a lot to discuss tonight, so we're trying to keep moving along.
Kind of information, Ms. Schreinerolden?
Yes.
Did you announce the change in the agenda order for the evening?
So we will, we did not announce that, but we will be having, so this evening we have public comment, then we have our student report, thank you, and then we have a, we will be having a presentation on our budget surrounding literacy support and K-8 staffing, then we will be having a presentation about the use of Clark Road and potential options for that. We will also be having, Melissa Goff will be coming to speak on the implications on the CIP of some of our leased spaces. Then we'll be going into executive session to discuss some of the leases and other items that are, yeah, leases, the negotiation of leased spaces. We will be coming out of executive session, then we will be having, the school committee will be having a discussion and a possible vote on the use of Clark Road, the lease of 62 Harvard, and the lease of Temple Obay Shalom. Then we'll be having subcommittee and liaison reports. Then if you're still here with us at midnight, we will be having new business, and then another executive session, potential executive session to discuss negotiations. So that will be the order of the evening, and like I said, we will just try our best to keep it moving along, and we appreciate everybody's patience in being here tonight. So our next two, I will try to also call the two speakers in a row, and then who is up next, so you know you're on deck, so we can keep things moving along, just in case you weren't, haven't been here before. So our next speaker will be, and also I will slaughter everyone's names, I will probably, even if I see some familiar names, I will probably slaughter those as well, and I apologize in advance. So first we have Iran Sagiv, okay, and then Lisa Sears will be our speaker after. Yes, and you do have to come to the microphone, you are on camera, and so if you just speak into the microphone, you can pick it up if that's more comfortable for you. And you have to give your name, your name and where you live.
Thank you. Iran Sagiv, I'm in 439 Washington Street, a Pierce parent. I'm here to encourage no move of Pierce. Several parents from Pierce have actually been talking to BEEP, Beacon families as well, and we understand that Clark Road doesn't work for either community. There may be some things that the town can't get out of for next year, especially with the BEEP classrooms that were already scheduled to be in BEEP next year. If there's one more year that the town has to keep the Clark Road facility and then give up the lease several years before it's over, we understand that can be done with, without penalty if town meeting does not authorize funds in the future. Maybe a year where the building is not as heavily utilized as it could be, just with the current BEEP classrooms and office positions, that would be better than moving, either com, splitting either community in a way that doesn't work, has been expressed in many ways, the majority oppose it, both communities, from what I understand, especially from Pierce, based on the survey. The idea of expending the money on the full four, five, five years for a building that no, neither community at BEEP or Pierce wants, at a time when we have budget constraints, budget difficulties, doesn't seem right, especially given that, from what I understand, existing leases, even the loft spaces of Shalom, all of those don't add up to what is going to be spent on Clark Road building if it's kept, and the additional costs of relocating classrooms, splitting staff, and all the other costs that have been in the cost comparisons of the options, just add up to more than just staying put, doesn't work for either community, and we ask that we find a way either to get out of the lease or to find alternative uses, perhaps from outside of the Brookline Public Schools, or subleasing to other community organizations, or otherwise simply getting out of the lease as, as we understand is possible. Thank you very much.
After Ms. Sears, we have Aral Silverman.
Hi, my name is Lisa Sears, and I live at 145 Dupont Park Street, and this is Nicole McClain, and, oh, 76 Monmouth Street. And I just wanted to highlight that we sent a petition earlier in today that was signed by many BEEP parents, and make sure you received it. And we also realized that we can't introduce you directly to many, like the children that would be affected, and so we made a very brief clip that we want to show you of our children who do go to BEEP.
Yes. They've provided.
They provided the pictures.
Yeah.
First, I want to thank everybody for their service at the table. My name's Errol Silverman, I live at 14 Warwick Road. Picture my daughter. My three-year-old daughter is in the RISE program at BEEP on Brookline. She has autism and is nonverbal. BEEP on Brookline is the only location that is accessible to us, so the move to Clark Road will put an end to her preschool education and the services she receives. Since she is a special needs child, the town legally has to provide transportation for her. The transportation will be a van driven by a stranger. Putting a three-year-old autistic toddler on a van with a stranger, no person in their right mind would even think is an option. I wanted to see how many families would be in similar situations. Yesterday, I sent out an email to all the BEEP on Beacon parents that I had email addresses for, didn't have email addresses for a lot of them. I asked them if Clark Road would be inaccessible to them due to relying on the T or being one-car families. I did not ask them if they would prefer Beacon over Clark, or if their commute would increase. I asked the one simple question, if BEEP were to move to Clark Road, would it be inaccessible? The response was an astonishing 16 out of 34 people. Mind you, I didn't have all the email addresses, and not everybody responds, especially in 24 hours, so that is significant. I bet if I did have the email addresses and there were a few more days, it would be significantly over 50% of people that it's inaccessible for. Not an extra half hour, an hour in the commute, not a little bit of a pain, but they cannot continue at BEEP. I also spoke with some teachers, and some of them would have to quit BEEP if the move to Clark Road took place due to its inaccessibility. A lot of them are taking public transportation from places like Cambridge or Somerville. Less teachers mean less students, because it would change the teacher-student ratio. Financially, this move does not make sense, and more importantly, morally and ethically, it is just wrong. You are nice people, you guys donate your time and energy to the town, do the right thing, and don't disrupt these sweet, innocent toddlers' early childhood development. Thank you.
After Mr. Jones, we'll have Laura Janelle Darrell, or Janelle, they might be Ns or Ns.
I'm William Jones, 1053 Beacon Street. Thank you again for all of your time that you've put into this committee and everything else you do for the town. I, I just want to add my own voice to all of the other people that are going to be speaking tonight and that have been speaking. I also sent emails, you've read them, in theory, you've been getting a lot, I would be shocked if you didn't get to all of them, but I hope that you read them all. My son, George Henry, he's, I think he's the first and final frame of the video that you saw earlier. He's a three-year-old at the BEEP on Beacon, we live two blocks from there, and we also, we have a three-week-old. Hey, 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 we're all getting lots of sleep. So, you know, just getting here and being at all these is really tough for me and my family right now, and I just want to kind of put that out there. The Clark Road is not easy to get through, even the next two closest BEEP locations to our home, Lynch and Coolidge Corner are approximately a mile away. It more than doubles our commute, and it just really will be incredibly disruptive to our lives, and we are by no means the worst off of the folks that you're going to hear from tonight as far as being affected, but I do want to add our story to theirs, and hope that you will consider keeping BEEP on Beacon where it is. Thank you.
And then we'll have Tina Silverman.
Hi, I'm Laura Janelle, hello again. I live at 412 Place, my daughter goes to BEEP at Beacon, and I'm also a town meeting member for Precinct Seven. I just wanted to address a few more points on the walkability of the Clark Road site. In the spirit of education, I'm a visual learner, so I just want to show you what you're asking to double their commute. This is the size of the foot that you are asking to double their commute. Sorry. This is also the shoe that doesn't go in a stroller, they refuse. If you see my daughter in a stroller, they probably, she probably has a party favors cupcake on the agenda that day. That is the only wish you will be in that stroller. So, with that said, you know, I think the walkability has to be addressed, because as a town meeting member, what comes before us all the time is, you know, reducing parking, making our community more walkable, increasing bike paths, increasing things that are reducing our reliance on cars. And I think when you are taking the precedent of moving a site to a less walkable site, you are setting a precedent for the right not talking to the left. School committee and town meeting should be working hand-in-hand for the same goals for the town, for our community. So I just wanted to address that, and I also want to say, you know, we are fortunate enough to be able to pay the full tuition at BEEP, but that is because we are a one-car family. We did sacrifice the second car to put more into our savings so that our child can attend. So it's also thinking, you know, accessibility-wise of the amount that we're spending and what we're not spending on. And then last of all, just while I have your -- really sad because she's really learning so much from her regular peers over at BEEP. She's having a great time. All I could say is please do not take this away from our families on Beacon Street. It means the world to us, and it means the world to Blair. And this is her main source of therapy. She gets six hours a day of RISE. That would be awful for her to lose that. Please consider keeping us at our home. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Faith Dantwitz. You want me out?
Hello, my name is Andrew Shalit. I live at 14 Greg's Terrace. I have a daughter at Pierce, and both of my kids went to BEEP at various locations. As others have said, thank you for all your work. I know it's a lot of work that you guys do, and we all, we appreciate it. I've been in discussions about Clark Road, and people have, have realized the work that you guys are doing, and that they're volunteer positions, except for you, Ben, you're getting. Our schools have lots of challenges that you know about. You know, at the top of the list, there's overcrowding. More recently, there's budget stuff. When you're in a situation with lots of problems, the obvious first step is to avoid doing things that make it worse. Unfortunately, as far as I can tell, all of the proposed uses of Clark Road make things worse. It's significantly more expensive than the properties that slated to, to replace. It, the proposal for Pierce is harmful to the educational program at Pierce and does not reduce overcrowding at Pierce. The proposal for BEEP at Beacon disrupts the, the lives of the families that are currently using that facility and loses access to the complementary programs at the temple. I attended the last meeting and, and saw the presentation and left, and afterwards I scratched my head. I couldn't stay for the questions and answer for the, the public comments. And I thought, where's the benefit here? I know that we've moved a couple of classes from Driscoll, a couple of BEEP classrooms from Driscoll, so there's a little space reclaimed there. There's a RISE classroom, I understand, is at, at Clark Road, so there's that use. But, but it seems like that's it, and all the other proposed uses are making our school system worse and spending more money doing it. So I hope that you're able to find a way out of that conundrum because we have enough problems already that we need to work on without, without adding, without adding more to them. You know, if it was a mistake to sign the lease, we should admit that and, and see if there's a way to, to get out of it. Thank you.
I believe the next name is Sheldon Chad. Something that's.
Good evening. Nice to see you all again. Thank you for all you do, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of some of the families of students on IEPs at BEEP on Beacon. My name is Faith Dantwitz, and I'm the mom of a RISE student who transitioned from BEEP to RISE at Runkell. I'm also the coacher of CPAC, which is Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. BEEP was designed to provide an inclusive environment. Our most vulnerable students begin in Brookline with BEEP. Would it surprise you to know that BEEP educators and students, the most complex, most at risk, and most likely to be negatively impacted by change, transitions, new atmospheres, have been routinely required to change locations over the last seven years? It's true. My son, a RISE student, was required to move three times in three years when he was in BEEP. He had three years because he was an October baby. High school, Putterham, Lynch. I was a Brookline Village parent, and my son, he was moved to Putterham. You might think, well, the schools are mandated to bus children on IEPs. Yes, but as another parent said, would you put your nonverbal child on a bus alone at three years old? It was something that I could not do. The BEEP special, special education teachers who moved this year with two weeks' notice and may have to move again, they changed the trajectory of students' lives. They absolutely do this, and they come to school every day, working with some of the most complex, challenging children. BEEP students who are not on IEPs are their community allies. Please don't take these our most vulnerable students, move them away from their community peers. Please do not ask these extraordinary gifted educators, these people who seem to do magic with our most vulnerable students, to move again. It was understood that Clark Road was rented to accommodate the Pierce community's need to accommodate growth. How will Pierce undergo renovation if they cannot separate at some level? It is my hope that you will choose to make the very best use of this space to help educators feel some relief and students at Pierce feel less overwhelmed. It would be outstanding for all students, educators, if our most vulnerable students, their cohort of peers, and their extraordinary teachers and specialists were not displaced and removed from the community on Beacon. Thank you.
And, and then I think the next name is Elena Chad.
My name is Sheldon Chad. I'm living at the, at this moment, at the Marriott, the Courtyard at Marriott on, at 40 Webster, and here with my family, and we are in the final stages of renting an apartment at 797 Washington Street. My wife got a job as principal scientist, and we moved here from Buffalo, New York. We chose Brookline for your community and your schools, maybe in that order. But instead of inviting us in, you've done everything to prevent our child, right here, Lara Evelyn Chad, from being, having a place in your schools. For three weeks now, this school board has, has, excuse me, has done everything to prevent our daughter to be in school, to make friends, to learn. For three weeks, you have dawdled, and you have turned our life into hell. Our child is still not in school after being in your community for three weeks. The fact is that from start to finish, the policies of the Brookline schools, and in some cases, the law has been broken. The school board and the registrar's office took their time to give us an answer on our residency, so much so that we had to enlist the Problems Resolution Office of the, of the state, who had us declare that we were mackenty vento for staying in the hotel. And finally, Maria Letage met with us and unequivocally said that we didn't, that didn't apply to us, but she didn't give us the proper paperwork. Yet in fact, she specifically didn't take, give us the proper paperwork that's meant that we, of how we would have to appeal, and in fact, in appealing that our daughter would get into school. And it took the state, again, the Problems Resolution Office, to basically come down on you, to come down on this thing to get our daughter into school, and still she's not into school. My wife will explain to you why that occurred. The, excuse me, I'm really livid here, and I apologize to you. The policies, even, and you have specific policies for placement in grade and placement, and those also were broken. We went, after we learned that basically she was put in, that she was put into second by Maria Letage, Maria Letage who has not only in terms of your policies for this school district, has no authority on what schools should be, what grade she should be put in. She basically told the school that, that we would be put into second. We went to the school, the school said that in fact, they, she, they were told by the school, that they were told by Maria Letage to put the school, our daughter into second. We came to your office, you were not there, we spoke to your secretary, your personal assistant, who basically again tried to play this game that her daughter hasn't gone through the, the ages, gone through the grades which she's gone through. She accused us as being a big, excuse me, she accused us of being, and in all these cases, of what age, of what grade that our daughter, our daughter should be in, you did not even ask for a transcript from her old school, and you placed her in, you placed her to grade. Excuse me?
If you could, if you could please finish up?
Okay, I would finish up by saying, her, the grade was imposed on her. We got, and in fact, the school itself, we got a letter from you, Superintendent, that said that you were in agreement with the school's decision to place her, a decision to place her in second grade. The school itself, the principal and the vice principal told us that they did not make the decision, that it came from your office. Okay, it came, I'll just finish one last thing. So the point which I'm saying to you, and I'll get, I'll forget all of the other stuff. In fact, all of your policies basically with respect to this have been broken. I'll tell you one thing which is important for you to know. This kid has come to yours, come to your, to come to, to be in a school in your, when she was in Buffalo, she dreamed that on her birthday, she would have a birthday party, which is next week. That's her birthday. She did, that she would have friends in this, in this, in this city to, to come to, from her school to come to a birthday party. You denied her that. You want to know who her only friends are? You guys are telling us, no, no, the last thing, I'm going to tell you the last thing. The last thing is you guys are telling us that our, our third grade, she's passed every Common Core idea, the school she came with.
Sir, it's, it's time to conclude.
I'll take, I'll take.
Wait, I'm sorry.
He could take my wife. It's my wife, I'll take her time. Okay? The reality is, okay, so we got it, so I'll back up for a few seconds. We got a letter from you, if, we got a letter here of the reasons for why our daughter is not being put in school. Our third grade daughter, who has a Common Core, has been, at the beginning of grade three, she basically had a 70%, 67% on a test that would have been taken at the end, so she's almost in grade four. The kid is basically advanced in mathematics. The kid basically, across the street, her only, and I'll just finish it here with respect to this. And so the only school you wrote, it was written that your, your, your second, last thing, not you.
I just want to clarify, I'm not the superintendent.
Okay, I'm going to say to you, the second grade of, the second, that the third grade, by description of the third grade of her school, Bennett Park Montessori, that the description of that school is equivalent to your second grade. That school, by the way.
And this is based on her racial profile, because your school is tighter ones, where the majority of kids, African-American, and majority of kids of under-poverty. You didn't compare scores because it's regulated by the same rules as your school. But because it's African-American kids and because it's under-poverty kids, you decided that your school is better.
And you didn't call, I told that principal to call, to call Jamie Frost at Tobin Montessori in Cambridge, who will tell you that it's exactly the same pedagogy. It's exactly the same level.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Our next, our next up, we have Leah Yeomans, and then Edie Brickman.
Hi, Lee Yeomans, 52 Killscyth Road. I am a BEEP preschool student. My son is three. Thank you for having us again. I won't take up too much of your time because you've, you've heard from me before. But the reason that I keep coming back is I am so passionate about BEEP and my son's experience there. He has done amazingly well since September. And one of the reasons we chose, we chose to enroll him in BEEP was because of its amazing reputation, its inclusive programming. We, the option we had was to keep him at his private daycare, which quite frankly was much more convenient for us on a, on a schedule basis and location basis. It's open from 6:30 to 6:30. We're two working parents, but we chose BEEP because of what an amazing program, and it has been the right decision for us and our family. He's doing very well. And so I just would like to reiterate my concerns that the current solution does not address our overcrowdy needs, which was what the lease was originally intended for, and I would just urge you to consider other uses for it. Thank you.
Andrea Rocata, I'm a BEEP on Beacon parent. I'll be brief tonight. I spoke last week, I spoke at the subcommittee meeting, I spoke at the parent meeting, so I've said a lot, and I've sent you all a lot of emails, so thank you for that. But what I really just, I don't really want to reiterate any of the points that we've made. You've heard them, I know you understand them, you're all very, you know, smart people and give of your time. But I just do want to point out that we're here, and we keep coming back. There's a lot of us here. We talk about this every day at drop-off, like every day at pickup, and it's just like constantly, you know, what we're worried about is this potential move, and we're here, and it's not easy for us. You know, many of us have multiple children. I have two little ones, I have an 11-month-old and a four-year-old. We have someone who's a three-week-old here, so just the logistics of getting here shows just how much we care about our school, about our community, and just please ask you, you know, to, to think about that and consider that in your, in your planning, that this would just be a huge major disruption to all of our families, and, you know, not in the best interest of our, our children. So thank you so much for your time, and I'll keep speaking, so I'll be back. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Daniel Caniff. I am the father of Lucy, who is in Pre-K at Beacon. I've attended a few of these meetings before, I haven't spoken. I really just want to add my, my name and my comments to my fellow parents and some of the other people who've spoken in favor of keeping, keeping BEEP at Beacon open. We live just at 1163 Beacon, just around the corner, and it really is, I view it as a privilege to be able to walk to Beacon every day, and to many other things that are on our doorstep. And I, I kind of implore you as the school committee to kind of do everything you can to keep it open if possible. I and my wife, we have lived in Boston before moving to Brookline, and before that, in some other cities outside of the U.S. And I think a hallmark of some of these communities, some of the best communities, I think, is having so many of your kind of key services integrated together and having them in a small area, accessibility and walkability. So I, it would just be, you know, terrible shame to kind of lose that. shows just how much we care about our school, about our community. Um, and just please ask you, um, you know, to, to think about that and consider that in your, in your planning, that this would just be a huge major disruption to all of our families and, you know, not in the best interest of our, our children. So thank you so much for your time, um, and I'll keep speaking, so I'll be back. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Um, my name is Daniel Kaniff. Um, I am the father of Lucy, who is, uh, pre, in pre-K at Beacon. Um, I've attended a few of these meetings before, I haven't spoken. I really just want to add my, my name and, and my comments to my fellow parents and some of the other people who've spoken in favor of keeping, keeping BEEP at Beacon open. Uh, we live just at 1163 Beacon, just around the corner. And it really is, I view it as a privilege to be able to walk, um, to Beacon every day and to many other things that are on our doorstep. And I, I kind of implore you as the school committee to kind of do everything you can to keep it open if possible. I and my wife, we have lived in Boston before moving to Brookline and before that in some other cities outside of the U.S. And I think, um, a hallmark of some of these communities, some of the best communities, I think, is having so many of your kind of key services integrated together and having them in a small area, accessibility and walkability. So, um, I, it would just be, you know, terrible shame to kind of lose that for that community. And, you know, thinking into the future, I think, as we try and build better communities, um, this one is a kind of a model of, of what we should be aiming for. Um, so trying to keep that together is really, I think, would be a great asset for the community. So, thank you, um, and thank you for your, your time.
Um, Ms. Snyder, yes?
Just disturbed by what that man, his upsetness. I'm Ruth Ann Snyder, I'm a town meeting member in Precinct Six, which is, um, Pierce School. I'm also on something called the Town Meeting Members Association Board, um, which hosts the listserv and also holds forums to educate town meeting members on issues that are coming before it. And so these leases that the school committee are proposing or considering with your input have to come before town meeting to be voted on. Normally, we have very little to say with the budget, um, but the leases are coming separately on the town side. And so I've come this evening to ask you, who would you like to represent to come to town, to the Town Meeting Members Association and address the issue of the BEEP program? Um, there are larger issues and smaller issues that will help us to understand what you, what you, what you need to understand. So who is your spokesperson, please? For the BEEP program?
Um, Ms. Snyder, we don't respond during public comment, we don't engage in back and forth. Uh, so, but we're, I'm happy to participate in a conversation offline if you're wanting to have a forum and you're asking for someone to come.
Thank you very much.
Okay. That's everyone that we have signed up to speak at public comment. Um, so we, we're actually going to take a five-minute break and then we're going to come back with a presentation from our superintendent. Oh, our student report, we will do our student before, before our break in case Mr. Cannon has any homework that he would like to get to.
All right. So last week I attended a student council meeting and a variety of solutions were addressed to combat the stress that occurs as we near the end of the quarter. With mid, with midterms approaching and the quarter coming to the close, stress is at an all-time high. So two solutions were proposed at student council. One was quite drastic and another was smaller but still very impactful. So the drastic solution posed was a three-class AP cap and it was met with fierce resistance. A heated debate followed and the bill did not earn student council approval. Another bill about homework deadlines was met with widespread approval. Under this new bill, nightly homework assignments cannot be due before the next class meeting. Under new Canvas protocol, um, some assignments are due at 11:59 or during arbitrary deadlines and students simply felt that it was unfair. Another widely discussed bill involved an unwritten guidance rule about, that some seniors have encountered. Seniors have attempted to adjoin a new sport for their final sports credit, but it's not been allowed. Bill hopes to address this issue and give seniors more choice regarding their health and fitness credits. Students at student council are also planning on fostering a stronger relationship with Mr. Mason. They're looking to get better information about bathroom closings and planned graffiti cleanups. Earlier today, I attended a legislator meeting and the two chairs were quite upset with the behavior of several representatives during the last meeting. Two weeks ago, there was heated debate over voting protocols regarding a controversial headphone bill. They, they reminded the group of the chair's authority and mentioned their discontent with the situation. The chairs also ruled on the voting protocol issue and decided that the headphone bill did not pass. Several representatives were upset and declared their intention to sue the chairs and settle the voting protocol debate at student judiciary. Later in the meeting, student council's homework deadline bill was also discussed and several members of the faculty expressed his content. One faculty member explained how a new rule could slow down class even more and increase the curriculum challenges posed by the new schedule. Another teacher mentioned how the bill could make preparing for class more difficult for teachers. Student representatives seem passionate, but the bill does not seem popular enough right now to pass.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon, just a couple of questions. So the first thing you said was that students, there was robust debate, but, and, and disagreement with any limit on how many AP courses students could take at any time. Did I understand that right?
Yes.
Meaning students want to be able to take as many APs as they like or-
So the bill was actually a cap on, I believe it was three APs for juniors and seniors, um, and the rules are different for sophomores. But, um, it doesn't look like it'll be met, turned into any sort of official rule because of how strong the opposition was.
Got it, just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly, thank you. And then also, I think you heard the student presentation from Pierce later tonight about vaping.
Right.
And, um, uh, they're absolutely, or I agree with them, I think they're right about just the, the, um, real risk of vaping, especially high school students, specifically Brooklyn High School. Um, being at the high school, do you have any suggestions, or do, can you build on any of their suggestions about what we could do to, um, uh, there were stigmatized vaping, but really sort of have an anti-vaping campaign that would be, that would be even more effective at the high school?
Right. I think sort of the root of our sort of vaping epidemic over the past couple of years has been just lack of education at the middle school level. I did not know, quite frankly, that vaping existed until my freshman year and it was just a constant problem at the high school. So I think the students have the right idea, starting early on. Um, I guess teenagers at the high school, we tend to be a bit more rebellious and don't really listen to, uh, the, the education as well. Sort of signs in the bathrooms are torn down, it's sort of a running joke throughout the school about the school's failed attempt to sort of regulate the vaping issue. Um, and I think starting at the middle school level is the right idea, because if vaping is stigmatized, it sort of takes out the root of the issue. Because when the school tries to take on the issue sort of head-on with direct discipline to students, uh, it almost has this effect, we see where it makes students more passionate about, uh, the practice. So I think starting at the middle school is definitely the right idea for those students.
Thank you very much.
So have any of your advisory classes talked about vaping? Has there been any? What sorts of things have been done to, beyond putting signs up in the bathrooms?
I mean, uh, from an education standpoint, uh, very little. It was not addressed for health and fitness freshman year. Uh, I think the current curriculum, and I don't know who works on that, but it's very much more focused on traditional drug addiction, opioids, uh, smoking. But, um, I took freshman, health and fitness is only required once to graduate, a half-credit. Um, and vaping was not addressed in the entire curriculum. Um, I think, uh, the focus should definitely be at the middle school level, um, because by the time vaping emerged as a big issue, uh, I'd had zero education on the subject like most high schoolers.
Um, so we, I mean, if the, is the board interested in just taking a short break or we want to keep plowing through? We're going to keep going. All right, we're going to keep plowing through. So, Mr. Lemus.
Yes? Well, you're giving this presentation, right? You're not doing K-8, right? You are. You have an open mic here, you have an open mic here, okay? This is our five-minute break, sorry.
I was going to officially have it, but, I guess.
Okay, uh, folks, sorry for the delay. Um, so we're up and running here. So I just want to remind folks in the audience and the school committee that all the, we've been calling these budget presentations. And someone at the finance committee yesterday said, "Well, there are no numbers, there are no dollars in the presentation." That is true, because they're sort of misnamed and for just convenience sake. They are the presentations, uh, leading up to the budget and in a, in a effort to help the, um, community and you, and the school committee better understand the programs and services and support that we provide in our schools, um, day in, day out, across the year. In order to help the community understand all the great work our staff and colleagues do, these, we're trying to provide much more detailed information about the work, about programs, support services. Um, and then if you notice, on, these are always easy to get to from our website by clicking on this link, which is, which stays there at this point, and we'll do the budget process. And then coming to here, and all the presentations we've been doing are all linked and updated fully from, uh, the, the, um, uh, right through yesterday. Um, and you can go there and review those. And then on the bottom of this page are the links to recordings of the public meetings that we have as well, as you, like, like this one, many, many of them are recorded. So let me just go here, no, wrong, not there yet. Second. Uh, boy, one second. I'll close that one. What? No. Okay, it's that, one second, sorry.
Yeah, there's two extras if you want. Or maybe one, Michael, when we want, you to give one to Michael.
Here we go. We don't have enough of the, the K-8 staffing, we'll print some off in a moment. Uh, I don't think this one is, you mean, is it, is it linked on the website? It isn't just because in case we need to make some changes, we usually put it up the next morning. Sorry about that. And which is what we'll do.
Oh, I'm sorry, can we start with the other?
Oh, yeah. Sorry? Sorry, switching things up? There you go.
Good evening, everyone. Um, this presentation is to provide information about literacy, um, support that happens at our K-8 schools, um, to give you an overview of what that looks like. Um, and again, these presentations are to educate the school committee and the community on key areas including programs and services, um, that are provided throughout the district. Um, in this presentation, um, we'll talk specifically about the literacy support program, including literacy intervention for students in K to eight, um, our school year and summer support programs, as well as literacy coaching and professional development for our K teachers.
It should be okay. Um, so I just want to open by giving a little bit of a frame for the work that we do in literacy. And the literacy support that we're talking about tonight falls under this umbrella, which is, um, what we're calling literacy in public schools at Brookline, our values and goals. And for, um, many years now, we as a literacy department have been operating, um, with these goals and values in mind, that we have design, we have a design for responsive literacy teaching, where our teaching and learning about reading, writing, thinking and talking is sort of well-planned out and works K to eight across our schools. That we use assessments to inform instruction, we use a variety of assessments to do so. And that really, um, at the core of our work is attention to each child as a unique reader and writer. We are also committed to a spiraling standards-based ELA and literacy curriculum with some anchored units of instruction and texts that are culturally responsive and accessible for all students. We are committed to a culture of ongoing collaborative professional learning and growth with coaching and professional development in all of our schools, that's our aspiration. And that we have a shared process for reflection and goal-setting and a systematic plan for sort of multiple pathways for literacy learning so that we have tier-one instruction, we have intervention in tiers one, two and three, and progress monitoring. So those are the values that undergird our literacy program. Um, I'll talk very briefly about what we mean when we talk about intervention and support for students. Um, that what, what we mean by intervention is essential support for students who are striving, learners who are striving to learn literacy skills to, at a rate comparable to peers. The support that they may need if they are not yet showing that growth. Um, that we, that it comes in the form of differentiated small group or individual instruction. And our models are both a pull-out model and a push-in model. That, um, the main process by which we start to understand when students need support is classroom teachers identify potential candidates using a variety of assessments and instructional information, such as the benchmark assessment system, classroom observation, conferring notes, writing, et cetera, a variety of sources and inputs for students who may need additional support. And then students are selected, um, during grade-level meetings with classroom teachers, special educators, EDL instructors, literacy specialists and other folks who are working in support of those students.
Um, the models, as Joanna just talked about on the previous slide, here is a detail of what these models look like in particular, and push-in and pull-out model. Um, both push-in typically around small group instruction that can happen for students thirty, thirty minutes a week, two, thirty minutes, two or three times a week in K and two. And then the same thing for our students in, um, grades three to eight who need that kind of support. Level, uh, literacy intervention, which is more intensive work with students that happens, um, five times a week. Um, and, um, about the same amount of time for grades three through eight, um, with fewer days. And then there's opportunity for small group instruction where kids get intense, um, focus on comprehension, phonics, whatever it is that their challenge is. Keeping in mind that literacy is about reading, writing, speaking, listening, um, all of those components together. So a student may struggle in one area, not another, and so they'll get, and they'll get more intense support, um, in the areas that they need. Um, read and recovery, which happens in first grade, um, and can be five days a week. Um, depending on, you know, student progress or not, um, I think what's important to recognize is that literacy intervention is not special education. And so because students have different learning profiles when it comes to learning to read, um, that it's important that we try to figure out what those, uh, what areas we need to focus on with students. And so we try to have a variety of interventions to support students in their reading learning. Um, and then we, it can be as intense as one-to-one instruction, um, twenty minutes, two, twenty to thirty minutes, two to three times, um, a week. Or, um, for our other grades, thirty to forty-five minutes, um, because we know how important it is to make sure that students are moving and making progress as far as literacy, um, is concerned. Um, another key component to the literacy program is our summer programming. Um, and we have two different summer programs, one for our grades one through four students. And so, um, that, we're talking about rising first graders, so after your kindergarten year for students who need it. Um, and it's twenty days in the summer, three and a half hours a day. Um, and over, there's usually somewhere- And over, there's usually somewhere around 10 to 11 students in each group. And so they get more support and individualized instruction in small group settings. And then for our students in grades 5 through 6, the classes are about the same size, smaller number of students need intervention, but we still want to make sure that students are getting the intervention that they need as they progress or don't progress with their peers.
Yeah, so I just want to, so the first part of the piece that Nicole just talked us through was the literacy support for students. So we have it during the school year, we have it in the summer, and then we have another prong to the literacy support presentation that we're giving tonight, which is literacy support for our adults in our district, literacy supports for teachers. And that comes primarily through our literacy coaching approach. And so I'm just going to really briefly outline for you the components of what literacy coaching is in the public schools of Brookline and what it involves. It has four main components, teaching, coaching, professional learning, and literacy leadership. And I'll just explain really briefly what those are. So all of our coaches are teachers, modeling, research-based practices. Every day, they're in classrooms in a wide variety of settings, whether they're doing residencies, they're co-teaching, they're pushing in for units of study, they're modeling, they're teaching all the time. And they're also supporting curricular and pedagogical continuity, K to 8. One of the things we've been talking about recently when we meet as a group is, right now I have coaches supporting at least four leave replacements. So there's continuity for when a teacher has to be out of a classroom for a maternity leave or some other leave. Our coaches do intensive support for those replacement teachers so that students have sort of a more consonant experience in what could be sort of a fractured learning opportunity. Coach's presence in the teaching life of the school really creates consonance and continuity. Coaching is also a big part of what they do. And what does coaching mean? Coaching is an opportunity to talk with teachers in support of literacy learning. So it's responsive, it's based on teacher need, teacher interest, what is important to a teacher with his or her class of students. It's reflective, it's providing a regular time and space for thinking about the impact of instruction and for planning targeted instruction to think about what students need and how they're going to respond. Coaching also, in our district, is a lot about professional learning because we want to be in a culture of continuous improvement. Getting better doesn't mean that something's wrong, it means we want to keep getting better. And coaching provides an opportunity for continuous professional learning. Our coaches go through an intensive training program to think about how to provide meaningful, powerful opportunities for learning for adults, to expand teachers' understandings in a variety of ways. And professional learning opportunities, when teachers come together in grade levels across schools, within schools, it creates opportunities for collaboration for colleagues that strengthens our teaching and learning experiences within a grade level, across grade levels, within a school. And then coaches also help craft a vision that honors teachers' expertise and provides really important information for new teachers. When teachers come into the district, coaches can provide that sense of guidance and leadership. What does it mean to be teaching literacy in Brookline? And they work between, among, and across classrooms and grade levels and clusters and buildings to create coherence in our district so that students are having coherent experiences, K to 8, within a building and across our district, not cookie cutter, but coherent. And so those are the four components of literacy coaching that undergirds the work that we do with adults in our program.
A coaching cycle consists of a pre-observation. Teachers, along with their coach, have an opportunity to have a conversation about what's happening in the classroom, what are the things that they're working on, what are the challenges that they're experiencing, what are some things that they want to try. They get to do some planning together. And then they have literacy learning labs where the coach will go in and observe or work with the teacher to roll out a lesson and kind of troubleshoot together.
I was going to say, they bring teachers in. Like, I was recently visiting a literacy lab at one of our folks who's here today, where a whole group of teachers on a grade level went in and observed a lesson and then debriefed it together. So working together in that kind of setting.
They have professional learning opportunities, which mostly look like release days where they have opportunities within a building, maybe over a grade cluster, to work together, to learn, to study student work, to plan, and to think about instructional opportunities, and to perhaps even collaborate on some of the work that they're doing together. And then co-teaching residencies, which sound like a lot of fun for folks. When I had an opportunity to meet with the literacy coaches a couple of, it probably was a month or so ago, just to be able to spend time with colleagues, co-teaching lessons, working together for an extended period of time so they get to see a continuum of student experience in classroom context. And so that really, you know, is a great opportunity for both our teachers and our coaches to continue to work together and build and strengthen what happens in the classroom for our students. This is the number of FTE that are committed to literacy support. We have student support and intervention, and that's our literacy specialists and interventionists, 21.2. We have 11.8 coaches, one coordinator, and just shared FTE, we have two who go between three buildings and one FTE between two buildings. This grid shows the staffing allocations at each school. And staffing allocations have mostly been based on the size of a school, but also the availability of literacy coaches in that school community. And then the benefits of coaching and intervention, as well as the challenges, there's, you know, probably more than this in both categories, but I don't, do you want to talk to those?
Okay. Sure. Yeah, apologies for the weak font there. I think what we were, in thinking about what the benefits of coaching and intervention, obviously, for coaching, it's this opportunity to create joyful literacy experiences and excitement around instruction and curriculum. And when you come together and you can do that kind of collaborative professional thinking, learning, reflecting, it's joyful. And that's a really big part of the work that our coaches do. Staff members are supported in literacy teaching. Teaching can be lonely. And when you have coaching support, you're not alone in your classroom. You're in conversation with colleagues all the time, and it feels very supportive. There's building base, the coaches serve as a building-based instructional and curricular resource. You know, I don't have to go through all the highlights of it, but one opportunity is that when you have a coach who's working across a building, across grades, up through grades, you have tremendous opportunity to have common language so that students and teachers are experiencing something that makes sense, that spirals up from K to 8, and that's one huge benefit. And it's similar, you'll see the bullet across on intervention is the same thing. We have a common language for talking about instruction in intervention and in tier-one in our classrooms and instruction, that we are using the same language so that students don't have a dissonant experience when they go out for intervention. They're coming back into a classroom and the language is quite the same. That our intervention allows for what we call an R response to intervention, an RTI approach. Students are well-supported in the general education setting, and then they're getting intervention as needed. We're using programs that are research-based, student growth is monitored. We developed increasingly powerful ways of looking at students' growth over time, ways of holding on to that so that you could look at, and we can understand if a child's been in intervention and is making progress, if a child has been in intervention and is not making progress, what decisions do we make, what next decisions do we make? So there are tremendous benefits. Challenges, we've had a staggered rollout of coaching. We've been in this process for eight-plus years, and some schools, you can see from the chart, have more support than others. That's a challenge. And we don't have an equal distribution of intervention across all of our schools. That's another challenge that we face. Time is always a challenge. And being able to have a clear articulation between what special education supports are for students, what general education and literacy services are, that's an ongoing challenge. We continue to work on it. We get better at it, but we will continue to work on it. And then just, you know, consistent time and structures for professional learning, for student learning, all those things and challenges that we continue to face.
Thank you. Thank you for this. Looking at slide four, when we look at values and goals, I wonder if you could talk a little bit about the application of the reading, writing, listening, and speaking across subject matter.
Slide four. If you could just, slide four, please.
So the school committee has had many conversations, are quite committed to project-based learning, authentic assessments, looking at student work, and doing that not just in a narrow framework, but thinking of applications in science and social studies. And it's come to our attention recently that there are some challenges and that some things we really need to talk about because the values of the school committee are not being reflected in some ways in some of the scheduling. So I know we're not going to get into it all tonight, but there are a number of us who would like you to come back, and we really want to dig into this. But one of the things I would like you to talk about just is why, in the values and goals, it seems that there's a gap in not including application of these skills, such as in social studies and science.
I think that probably hasn't been written here because it's an assumption. And one of the things that we've learned in working with the coordinators over the past couple of years is they value literacy because it is the way to allow students to really dig into the content that is provided, much more deeply into the content that is social studies, science, math, and ELA. For kids to be able to build, to get into that without strong literacy skills is a challenge that they see. And so they're, you know, they recognize that there has to be a balance between the two, for sure.
So, you know, I would push back a little bit and say that it's true that you have to learn your basic skills, but then the application of those skills would, and the content, would be in social studies and science and hands-on.
Absolutely.
And that's where the kids get excited.
Absolutely. And I think that's the assumption that hasn't been written here, is that the reason we teach literacy is so that students can apply it in those other areas.
Yeah, so I would really encourage including that as part of our values and goals around literacy.
Okay.
That we have that application in these areas that are very exciting.
Absolutely.
And that really, you know, foster learning in ways that we really want to see as a school committee. I'll let somebody else speak before I speak again.
Mr. Perlman first.
I'd just like to try to understand the FTEs a bit better here. So on slide number 10, it says that student support and intervention is 21.2. Is that for, is that including the 11.8 for coaches or separate? All right. So then I have a question about the ratio.
Sorry, it was, I missed the answer. It's included?
Separate.
No, okay, separate.
So then I have a question about the ratio. Essentially, there's one coach for two interventionists?
It's not, those aren't built in conjunction with each other. The ratio that we've tried to work on is more from how many sections in a school and how much intervention we can provide for the school. So that's like the ratio piece, the coaching intervention ratio, they're sort of separate entities, so they don't work kind of connected to one another.
What would that ratio be approximately? So those were serving in a purely coaching function as opposed to a purely interventionist function?
So in, I think, so in literacy, what we have structured is that there are separate roles, separate distinct roles. Is that clear?
Yes, but what's?
Whereas in math, they're sort of combined-ish. Maybe I'm asking a question, entering your question.
So if they're separate, I'm just wondering how many are in each role. Looks from here like it's a one-to-two ratio, but apparently that's not how the numbers look. I'm just wondering.
Are you asking if the coaches are coaching the interventionists?
Correct.
I don't think that that happens. I think they're separate buckets and separate functions completely.
They're actually separate, separate, for lack of a better term, audiences. Intervention is working with students.
Who have identified IEPs.
Or, no, 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 no.
General education.
General.
This is, this is good, this is good, this is the point, to learn, okay? And then the coaches are their audience, so to speak, are their colleague teachers, you know, the classroom teachers. So there isn't any, there's no connection between a ratio that are connecting the two. They're actually working for separate purposes, separate goals. I mean, they're linked, obviously. I don't think I'm explaining this well.
Are the coaches for everyone?
Coaches, if you take this.
Yeah, for classroom teachers.
In general, more broadly, so all the teachers in the building.
Specialists, but primarily the focus of coaching is on tier-one instruction. So what is the general instruction for all students that's happening primarily in classrooms, in classroom settings?
What kind of interaction do the coaches have with students, any at all?
Yes. And so they're in classrooms, teaching daily in a variety of different structures and settings, for sure. And so they're working, I have a coach here with us tonight who has, they have several, they have presence in probably seven or eight different classrooms at a time and to varying degrees of concentrations.
And is that?
And I have others who do co-teach, like, I have a coach right now who's done a co-teaching residency in a kindergarten for the whole first semester. So during her literacy block, she's working with that co-teacher during that time.
Then another question I have on slide seven. See that we have 142 students in grades 1 through 4 who are involved in summer literacy intervention? And then it drops by a factor of three for grades 5 and 6. Now, is that because our students are benefiting a lot from that intervention in grades 1 through 4, or is it because of the staffing shortage, or?
It's, so you're, you've got half the number of grades in the grade 5, 6 program. So you go from four grades, 1, 2, 3, 4 to 5, 6. So you're sort of starting with a half, kind of half of an invitation list to begin with, and then it's just a smaller number of students who opt into the program. So the percentage is, we invite about 600 or so students in grades 1 to 6 over the summer. And then this is kind of how the distribution shakes out. We get about 200 students out of that. So a third of those invited end up attending for a variety of reasons, conflicts with summer programming, family vacations, I don't want to do that, et cetera. It's a voluntary program.
Thank you.
Sharon, I had a question, I have a question that follows up on that. Is that okay? If you have a different?
Please do.
So I wanted to go back on this, when we were asking questions about the number of individuals in intervention, that provides student supports and interventions, do any of those provide supports to students who specifically have IEPs who call for literacy intervention? Or this is a separate category, kind of the early intervention or pre, do they overlap?
Yeah, so there's some overlap. We have some students who are on IEPs, who qualify for IEP services, who do receive literacy support, in-level literacy intervention. What we try to be very mindful of, though, is how fractured a student's program is. So if you have a child who's qualified on an IEP for getting reading support or specific literacy support services in a learning center or in a special education setting, we try not to then also have that child be attending intervention because that means they're pulled out of a classroom experience more than once. So we try to be balanced and mindful about it. But we do have students, some students who have IEPs for other areas that get intervention in the general ed intervention setting. Does that make sense?
It's the last, I don't understand the last part of your, you said you have some that get it in the, some who receive their services in the general education.
So our literacy intervention is considered part of the general education.
Okay, curriculum.
So most of our students who are in intervention are, do not have IEPs. But we do have some, there's some. But we do have some, there's some overlap.
Okay.
Thanks. I'd, I'd like to emphasize the fact that this was supposed to be a budget presentation, but there is no finances presented in this budget. We are using several curriculum programs, is that correct? Literacy collaborative and foundations, and I'm not exactly sure what else. Could you please tell, could you please tell us the names of each of the literacy curriculum that we're using and how much we're spending on an annual basis on those programs?
Yeah, I do, I do want to just clarify, I said earlier, in this camp, I finance subcommittee, just to, just to answer, you know, about, about the numbers. And very few of these presentations have we actually attached numbers to them, especially the curriculum ones, because, and that's, you know, perhaps an omission, and I appreciate the term we're using, budget presentation, that the intent is to get folks informed about just what you're asking about, the program, what, what the work is, who's doing the work, that sort of thing. So that, lack of numbers is the point, is my omission. We will be sharing all those numbers with you as the budget process goes along. We're just typically not doing it in most of these presentations. Some are, but that's, you know, based in part on the department or the person who is doing the presenting, so. Folks keep on asking me, I say, no, it's not necessary, because for most of them, they're not, particularly the curriculum ones, so that's my omission.
Okay, if you had to ballpark, would you say it's a quarter million dollars a year, $50,000 a year, a million dollars a year? I have to say I'm asking because recently I was at a, I was at a private, I was in the household of an educator who showed me all of the curriculum materials that they had received specifically for literacy, and it was about $2,000 of materials just for that one educator laid out on a table. And all of those materials looked quite new. So, I, I would really like to just get a ballpark. I mean, can we, can we settle on under $100,000, over a million dollars per year?
Unless you know that number off the top of your head, I'd, I'd rather not, you know, conjecture, or, I'd rather actually get you the actual numbers, which we will do.
Thank you.
Yep.
Her department doesn't have a budget that large at all, so, I mean, she, it's not a million dollars.
Yeah, so, so, so we'll, we'll, yeah, we'll get the numbers, absolutely. I appreciate the question.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you referenced literacy collaborative. Literacy collaborative isn't a curriculum, it's a university partnership and an affiliation to help us deepen our practice. It's not a curriculum, there's no set of materials. This is what you do to do literacy collaborative, so just wanted to clarify.
What is the nature of that partnership?
It's a, a program that helps train literacy coaches in research-based practices.
Can I ask you a question? I truly don't know the answer to this, and I apologize. Is there, do literacy coaches have roughly the same skill set as literacy specialists?
Different skill sets.
So they wouldn't be able to function as literacy specialists?
Some of them have dual degrees and have done that in the past.
Are we experiencing shortages in access to literacy specialists in any of our grade ranges? I've heard about shortages with, about difficulty accessing specialists at the middle school level.
That is likely more a scheduling complexity than a personnel complexity.
Sorry. So I'm looking at the FTEs, and I'm, I'm curious, the coordinator, is that your position?
That's me.
Oh, okay, so it's not another coordinator for the, okay, just wanted to make sure that, that I understood that. And there are 33 FTEs in this whole, besides you. Okay, thank you, that's what I missed.
I just, we have Mr. Perlman, and then I saw a couple of other hands. I just want to take a minute to note where we are on time and where we are in the agenda. So I'm going to suggest that we take five more minutes of discussion. You have one more? Okay, well, so we're gonna, we'll give, we'll make sure everyone has had a chance to speak, and we'll see how well we can utilize, you know, five minutes or so, and then we're gonna go to the next on the agenda. Mr. Perlman.
Getting back to the coaching regarding scheduling, when does the coaching actually take place in sort of the discussions of proper pedagogy?
When do the coaching sessions take place? We have an agreement that was negotiated with the workload oversight committee that coaches and teachers can meet during the world language time, so pre and post-observations take place during those times. And other agreed-upon times that they meet, but we have.
Okay, we don't, we don't take comment from the, Ms., no, we're not going to take comment from the audience. You can, you can finish answering if you weren't done.
Yeah, that's, and, and other negotiated time.
Ms. Monopoly.
Sorry, now I have a new question. Are those observations required, or are those voluntary observations? You were just talking about a pre and post-observation time.
That's part of the coaching cycle, so that we, it's an expectation that folks work and do some kind of a pre-imposed observation or some kind of a coaching conference once every three weeks. But is it, has it absolutely been required? There have been folks who have asked not to participate, and that has generally been honored.
So it is, so we are requiring the observations? Or based on literacy?
Hasn't been required, per se. We, we would very much like that to be part of a teacher's life, but it's not a mandate.
Every three weeks?
Coaching cycle.
I think, I want to be clear, and I may have this wrong myself, but if the question, are, are teachers required to get coaching? Is that essentially the question, or are you asking?
And that are they required, I'm specifically asking whether or not teachers are required to participate in the coaching, and whether or not they are then required to participate in a coaching cycle every three weeks of observations, in addition to their evaluation observations.
That's what I thought you were asking. I think Joanna was answering a different question.
Oh, okay.
Do you understand the question now? Or, ask it again.
Are, are teachers required to participate in the coaching cycle with literacy coaches? Are they required to be observed by coaches?
No.
They are not? Okay, because the way-
No, I mean, that is our model, because we know that that's a model that's generally supported. Required, no, it's not a requirement. Nobody is coming down and saying, yes, you did it, no, you did not.
And that would be the expectation? Would-
All right, we're not going, we are not, we are not interacting, we are not interacting from the audience. We're going to stop, or I'm going to ask you to leave.
We also, at, at each school, there might be an expectation that's coming from the principal, there could be some, you know, grade-level expectation that people are involved. There's no point in, there's no way to coach someone without observation, and it is a non-evaluative observation, more based on this conversation, this is what I'm working on, this is what I saw, and less, you know, not at all related to evaluation.
Okay, I think maybe I need more conversation on this, doesn't have to happen right now, but I, I think I, I'm, I'm a little, I think I need more-
I think it is fair to say that, that things are, just as we do in Brookline, we have variation between our schools, and that happens a lot of different ways.
Right.
And so it's also likely, I'd say, that there's some variation in how it's carried out at each school, depending on their culture, their approach, that sort of thing, I think.
Might just be good to, some, yes, and maybe some clarity around what the expectation is of being communicated to people. So I think that might be some of the discrepancy. But my, my original question was, back to, Ms. Fettishbale had mentioned, talking about our literacy goals and values, and her comment about the application of skills in other subject areas. And so I wanted to really encourage us to reflect our values and including opportunities for interdisciplinary learning in our right front. Like, I really think that should be part here, that doesn't come through in the way that it's worded. So I just think that that's important for members of the community who may access our documents, and that these should be setting the values for, for us. The other question I had was, on the, I'm sorry, I can't read the slide number, it's the inter, the distribution of intervention in coaching, it's towards the very end, it's like the second from the last slide. I was just sort of, and you mentioned the sort of the, the distribution of coaches and interventionists across schools, and so I, and I see that we have 11.8 coaches. And I was just wondering how, how the number of coaches that we need or interventionist either are determined, and, and what are any possible impediments you might see to, that get in the way of equitable distribution across our schools?
Funding for one. I'm sorry? Funding for one.
Yeah, that's, that's what we need.
Yeah, so when I came here a number of years ago, the coaching program had begun, it was underway, but it was, it had been just barely kind of rolled out, and the initial understanding was that there would be coaches at K to two, three to five, and six to eight. It was quite clear that that wasn't going to be financially sustainable, so trying to think about the span, K to eight school with as many as almost 900 students, and then accordingly, you know, 30-plus teachers, to think about what's a reasonable distribution of coaching. Ideally, we'd really like to be able to have two coaches in each building, we're not there yet, obviously. And similarly, for intervention, the numbers were kind of all over the place also, and we've tried to work to right-size that a little bit. The goal has been to have, in my mind, at a minimum, two interventionists for three-section schools, and three interventionists for four and more section schools. We have Title I schools who have always had larger allocations of FTE, and it's been trying to honor that process, but trying to right-size it, and as you can see, we're not quite there yet.
Okay, I know that we have a lot more questions and a lot of interest in continuing to talk about these sorts of issues, but I think we've, we've covered, we've covered a good overview, as we wanted to do within a budget, the budget presentation for this evening. And so I'm going to suggest that we talk with Moscato about having you, you guys come back and do a more thorough deep dive on some of these curricula-type issues and further discussion, because I think there's a lot of interest and that it is an important topic, but we do need to move on with our agenda for tonight, so.
Is it possible I could just put something on a parking lot? Do you know how you do that? You just say-
Put a pin in it?
Yeah.
Okay. What would you like to put a pin in?
Well, I'm looking at slide six, and it's talking about the program structure and bringing children out or pushing in, and I'm just very concerned that as we increase our time with literacy, we have been decreasing our time in, in science and social studies, and I think that we need to talk about that soon.
Yeah, so-
So, that's on, that's on my parking lot, and I just want to put it out there.
Yes, I'm, I am happy to, we need to, we need to clarify some misconceptions, and our, I can assure folks that the district Office of Teaching and Learning have not in any way tried to or systematically curtailed the teaching of social studies of science, okay? And it's a much longer conversation, I just want to address, I just want to address quickly.
I agree, it's a longer conversation, I just want to make sure that we have it on, in the record that we need to do this.
I do want to just address it quickly in, in two ways, and I'll just say goodbye, there's a, there's actually an even broader conversation. We do a tremendous job in Brookline and have tremendous community values about having a very well-rounded education, okay? And then, and we provide, from community decision and community funding and community values, you know, tremendous well-rounded education in terms of course, the academic areas, including world language, health, wellness, performing arts, visual arts, interventions for those who need it, I could go on and on. Recently, we've been putting maker spaces in, in our, in our, in our schools in order for, you know, more project-based learning and more hands-on learning. And we have a finite time in our school day, in our school year, and so every day, our teachers, you know, sort of struggle and make decisions about how to adjust things, what to include, what not to include. Office of Teaching and Learning has been trying to support that. Office of Teaching and Learning has not put forth to teachers or schools defined guidelines for time and learning for two years now, after having done it for almost 10 years. And so we'll hear more about that, but I just want to be clear that, that it is an important challenge, a discussion to figure out, how do we figure out all the things we want to put in a school day, and how do we make those important choices? They're valuable choices, they're choices to, to think hard about, but, and just want to, so I appreciate the question, I appreciate the, the community conversation, and we'll get more into it in more depth.
Point of information for the interims, for intended, when we do revisit this conversation again, I'll want to see qualitative feedback from educators about whether, how valuable they find the, the literacy coaching system and the literacy intervention system. I participated in some of the kinder, I was present at the kindergarten conversations that occurred early this year, and I am aware that there is considerable concern about how much benefit educators are actually deriving from this extensive program. Thank you.
Okay, we're, nope.
My, my question transitions us from one subject to this one.
Thank you, Mr. Perlman.
Regarding coaching more broadly, do we have coaching in other programs? Is it just in literacy? And if so, why would the focus be in literacy as opposed to other areas?
We do have math coaches. I think literacy is one of the, the areas where it's, it's just prevalent in education now. But the other thing is that we struggle in some areas to make sure that students are reading on grade level, and it's the foundation. Once, if you can't read, you can't do anything else well, right? And so, if nothing else, we need to make sure that students are reading, but it's a great opportunity to, and I don't know how much, you know, there, there is opportunities for instructional coaching and other approaches to, to coaching and support in the classroom, but we recognize, you know, far before I got here, that it was an important endeavor, and I think coaching has grown, and there are far more people connecting with it than not. And I think it will be a great opportunity to hear from coaches and teachers who are willing to talk about their coaching experiences, for sure.
Thank you. And so we are going, no, we're, no, we're gonna, unless you're transitioning, okay, great.
So the next presentation-
Thank you.
It, it, I'm telling you now, it will be unsatisfactory, okay? It is, it is, just trying to be real here, it's staffing K to eight elementary schools, and, and we're really just going through with you the different roles we have in our K to eight schools. And we are not going to attach significant numbers to these, we are working on that, and it will be included in the budget. We actually do have a draft of, you know, just all these allocations across different schools, so we can see, you know, the different roles at each, each school, and how, and, and to what degree they exist. So, this is going to be light on specifics, but really giving an overview of the different roles and, that we have in, in all of our schools. So, Dr. Gittins, take it away, please.
And Dr. Gittins, too, to the extent that you think that we could read everything that's on this slide to get the gist of it, and we know we have the expectation that this is light on presentation, and so I can, I'm going to put a, put a plug in for encouraging that as well. Good time. Thank you.
We'll be able to read this very easily, it is, is probably the most basic presentation that has happened. So, these are the overall, the categories of folks that are at, in our schools. Of course, general and special education teachers, related service providers, and those are specifically for special education, academic and instructional support teachers in Paris, instructional coaches and specialists, administrative support, administrators and facility staff. That's basically what we have. At our, at each school, of course, we have a principal, and then we have vice principals. Typically, our formula has been to add one vice principal for every 250 students, so if a school has 250 or less students, they have one VP. If they have 500 students, once they get to 500, we look to add another VP. 750, we're looking to add another VP. Teachers, our general and special education teachers. We have specifically in our special education classes, we have in-classroom support, and we have sub-separate programs. Related service providers. Just an explanation for, and the asterisks are folks that are not at every school, you can't see that at the bottom of the screen, so I apologize for that. PBIS, Paris, and I always forget what PBIS stands for, every single time. But it's about behavioral intervention support, positive behavior, I knew I had part of it, right? And steps to success advisors, they are at three of our schools, because we have a cluster of steps to success schools at, at only four, excuse me, four of our schools. Five of our schools, including the high school. I'm talking about K to eight, so never mind. Inclusion specialists are not at every school as well, but we have literacy coaches, specialists, SARA, educational team facilitators, which I have on there twice, we don't have them at schools twice. I mean, I, I'm not 100% on the count. on there twice. We don't have them at schools twice. I mean, I'm not 100% on the count, but I put it on the screen twice. Of course, librarians and school nurses. And then schools have the school secretary and the principal secretary. And of course, we have food service staff and custodial staff. We may be missing some of... I captured most of the staff that the challenges at different schools, positions are called different things, even if there's like a title in the system, they might refer to them as something different in the school. So this is our general staffing for our K to eight schools.
And then you might also have in schools, like a Northeastern co-op student or teaching interns or stuff, those vary quite widely across the schools. Again, just wanted to... That's the last slide, right?
Yep.
Just wanted to sort of lay out, these are all the various roles we have in our schools. Certainly, they're well-resourced and well-staffed, and a variety of roles that aren't at every school. But just again, and we'll be providing you sort of look across all the schools and the different roles, as well as the cost in the budget.
Well, I certainly appreciate there's a lot of time pressure in putting together all these various presentations. And I do understand that a lot of this information is available if we dig around and look through the full budget book. But I think for purposes of educating the public and ourselves, it would be helpful if we had FTEs next to each of these lines and some basic breakdown, rather than just a list of categories.
You hit the nail on the head there. There is a lot of time pressure right now. We're doing, you know, much more in terms of putting together these presentations than I've been aware of or been party to the last, you know, five or four years. And we really just sort of, you know, hit the limit on this one. So that is absolutely fair. And we won't, we will be presenting it, my intention is to present it in the budget book, not so, I mean, so it can be easily found. And are happy to also, you know, make sure you understand it clearly, because you are right, that we do need to understand how we staff our schools and how we staff our schools, you know, across the board and in relation to each other, and understand that better. Yeah, we're working on that.
Yep. So we have another presentation. Do we have Melissa's with us?
Yeah.
Okay. We do. So the beginning.
Come on. Come on. How do we go first? Is that okay? All right. Yeah, great. Thank you. Sorry. I do do a lot more than just fool with computers and put our presentations, I promise you. Okay, folks, so what we haven't done at a full school community meeting is given folks a presentation of Clark Road. We've done it at numerous peer school meetings. We've also done it at numerous finance, capital community meetings. So I will go through this quickly. It may be a rerun for some folks, but not for everybody. So again, PSP continues to plan for and find solutions for many of our district-wide space and facility challenges. I'll go through this part quickly. Our facility challenges at PSP include a number of things. Our continued overcrowding at our schools, enrollment remains more than 1,500 students greater than it was in FY 2006. We have some standard facilities in most of our schools, particularly for our most vulnerable populations. And we also have outdated buildings, including Driscoll, Pierce, and the Vega schools that are at or nearing their end of life. And we have a need for additional classroom spaces, particularly for special education and English learner education programs. We continue to have beep classrooms outside of our schools in leased spaces. The school committee has had a longstanding goal to return our elementary schools to pre-K to eight schools. We have a neighborhood of $1.5 million in expenses annually for leased spaces and their operating costs. And then also, we have office space for up to 60 employees who provide essential services for students, families, and schools every day. That used to be in school buildings and now are temporarily housed at Clark Road. That 60 numbers actually, Clark Road plus the SEC, which of course, the Spurber Education Center is not leased at this point, but we still need spaces for all those folks going forward. Our priorities of the process remain unchanged. We want to continue to provide the best educational environment for all of our students. We want to minimize disruption to students, families, and staff. We hope to address PSP's district-wide space needs using facilities and means within our control. And we want to limit costs so PSP can operate within the town's operating and capital budgets. For any... And I do want to urge folks to take, you know, the decisions over time as a whole, meaning we try our best to maximize all of these priorities in each decision, but it is hard to. And we really try to look at the course of decisions of facilities. So what's been developed, a long-term solution to the three-school plan. We are rebuilding the Driscoll School. We are seeking to renovate and/or expand the Pierce School. And then at some point, still would like to develop a new two- or three-section school at a site that's undetermined yet. That's possibly Old Lincoln going forward, or it could be another site. The short-term, one of the many short-term solutions has been through leasing of Clark Road, which adds 16 classrooms. And that includes two playgrounds, library, computer area, small cafeteria, and a variety of other learning spaces that are all very high-quality. In fact, they're better than some of our spaces in many of our other, many of our pre-K to eight schools. So just a reminder of why did PSP lease Clark Road initially. It's a high-quality facility that is a rare find in any community, particularly in Brookline. We can, the intent is to use Clark Road facility to address as many district and school-specific needs as possible. And then also, just the Select Board and Advisory Committee voted unanimously to support the school committee's decision to lease Clark Road in July 2019. Currently, it's used for three beep classrooms, including one rise classroom, and office space for 41 staff members who are providing services in the areas you see below. Positive impact of Clark Road so far has been to relocate beep classrooms at Driscoll and Putterham, creating additional learning space in those buildings. We also were able to let go of a lease of 24 Webster Street and relocated staff offices to that building. It also allowed us to return our Office of Registration, Enrollment, and English Learners, English Learner Education to Town Hall. And those are very much, you know, family and student-facing offices every day, and they're at a better central location right now. And if we've released a 24 Webster Place lease, if we also release a 62 Harvard lease, that would be a total of $584,000 in leases and total expenses that the town can spend in other ways, or should the town, that would reduce our costs, allowing us to fund other leases. So we've looked at three different options for Pierce, kindergarten only, kindergarten first grade, kindergarten first and second grade. The original recommendation, December 2019, December 2019, which was only a month ago, was to fully utilize Clark Road with four or five beep classrooms, five kindergarten classrooms for Pierce, and then workspace for up to 34 staff members on the third floor. There is now, also, the committee is now considering an early education center option, which would be to move beep at Beacon. That would allow for an early education center at Clark Road with 10, up to 10 or 11 beep classes. It would provide a true early education center with a critical mass of our preschool and pre-kindergarten teachers and staff. It's a better facility for learning inside and outside than Beacon, as well as other schools as well. It will increase access in an area of town where need exists. It allows, it has the potential for PSP to end one more lease, beep at Beacon. There'd be minimal additional staffing or transportation costs once we move out of Beacon. It is the most cost-effective option being considered. And we could still house the administrative offices at Clark Road. But I'm sorry, I'm rushing through this, and I said this before, I'll say it again. In my rush to get through, so you have time to discuss, I am not, I want to acknowledge, I should say, the impact any of these options have on our families. Okay? I shouldn't say it goes out saying. It is an essential issue. It is a complicated factor. We understand deeply, from our own experience and from being, you know, in our roles, really two things. One, how powerful the education happens in our schools, at beep, at Pierce, at all of our schools happens. And what we hear again and again, despite of the difficulties on facilities and classrooms and moves, our educators, our colleagues do a tremendous job for our families and their children. And I appreciate the beep families and Pierce families reminding us of that so passionately. We will continue to do that, and there are real challenges that we also have to address. And I don't want to, again, in any way, shape, or form, understate. I want to acknowledge the challenges that any moving people causes for families and their day-to-day lives. I don't want to lose that. And it's hard to actually express the deep understanding we have for that. What is the no-move option? And so just to continue on, what does the no-move option look like for Pierce? In working with Leslie Ryan Miller and some of the administrators there, there are ways that, there are certainly ways that Pierce can make this work. It's not ideal. None of this is ideal. Okay? I think we're far past ideal in Brookline at this point. Use the Spurber Center for two classrooms and small learning spaces, potential for moving a vice principals out of their office and convert that into a classroom, a computer lab converted to a classroom, a world language class with travel from room to room, and possible consolidation of smaller classes. These are all things that are actually happening at our existing schools now. I just want to share that this is not something that, these are not experiences that Pierce would have separate and above other schools. Other schools have combinations of these as well, if not all of them. The challenge, one of the main challenges, as it stands now, with the Capital Finance Committee vote from earlier in 2019, and what I'm operating on, that Pierce would still lose the use of five classrooms in the loft, so the same number of students are using the smaller facility. I just want to be very open about that, as I have been. There's some challenges.
Before you move on from that slide, would all of those things need to happen, or there are possibilities being shown on that slide?
Well, so there are four classrooms at the loft and a learning space, you know, a small learning space. So you would, you know, if you have the same number of classrooms, you know, inner classrooms, you want to replace those. You know, we are looking at consolidation of smaller classes across our buildings, you know, so you may not have the same number. We also would try to, you know, limit Pierce to four kindergarten classrooms. We tried to do that in the past, it's been difficult. So, you know, they may not need to replace all four classrooms, because they may have fewer classrooms, but that's TBD. I just want to... Is that clear enough?
I think that helps, but I think my question is a little different, because if we need four classes plus a learning space, if you did everything on that list, you would get six.
You'd have more than that.
Okay, so you're not, this is not proposal with no-move and all of these things?
So it's possible ways Pierce, you know, could make it work.
Okay, thank you.
That's right. I mean, those, again, those details need to be, will be worked out and need to be worked out, and that's why we're hoping the committee will come to a decision quickly, as quick as possible. So there are challenges, well, with the early education center option. You know, as I said before, disrupt it to families who are planning and continuing to beep. Okay? It will negatively impact enrollment staffing at beep until beep can rebuild. Okay? We have experienced that at Putterham, so we need to expect it. It will move beep seats away from a densely populated area of town with easy public transportation access. And then all the beep at Beacon does provide a unique program in the town for our beep programs. Because of the partnership with the Trust Center, they are able to offer a full-day school vacation summer program for students that most of our other beep locations don't do to that extent. There is another option that we are looking at now, and we've been talking about and thinking about, and that would be moving away from beep at Beacon over, you know, in phases. So three classes move to Clark this year, and two more move the following year. I will talk about that more in a moment. I just want to really get to these. These are some details about each option that we're still under consideration. Pierce K to Clark. So the student impact on that is 100 students and their families, obviously, impacted through the duration of the lease and likely through the Pierce building project. That's many, that's multiple years, five, six, maybe seven years. We have the lease for five more years, obviously, at Clark Road. Pierce has four classrooms, as I mentioned. There's a limited number of shared staff that travel, but staff would definitely have to travel between Clark and Pierce if we moved Pierce kindergarten to Clark. Beep at Beacon operates as it does today. There's no impact on beep at Beacon in this option. The beep classes currently at Clark remain. They don't have to move again. Okay? Remember, they just moved very quickly in the summertime. Administrative staff at Clark consolidates to the third floor. Baldwin would ultimately house two beep classrooms by FY '22, we hope. And the upshot of that is that there is, you see the total FY '21 cost of leases. We would be leasing Clark, Beacon, and Putterham for $1.6 million, and the operating costs across those three sites are $303,000, annual operating costs to run those buildings. Okay? I'll just keep going here. Pierce K to two to Clark. That would be 15 Pierce K to two classrooms. I am not showing Pierce K to one to Clark. That seems like untenable. The student impact would be 300 students about, and their families, obviously, impacted for the duration of the lease, and even further potentially. Five additional classrooms are gained at Pierce. We actually moved 15 classrooms out, but as many as five beep classes would have been moved in, because they'd be pushed out of Clark, and they'd most likely be at the historic building. And then also losing the 62 Harvard lease. If all those things happen, then Pierce gains five classrooms at most. Limited number of shared, this option actually has the least number of shared staff traveling. There still will be some, because the way Pierce is organized, like many of our K to eights, they have K to two staff, are sort of, many specialists and resource folks organize K to two, so they wouldn't have to be, you know, servicing other students and having back and forth. There would be some, but it looks like this would be the least amount of travel. As I mentioned, beep classes that have just moved to Clark would have to be moved again. Beep at Beacon operates as it does today. Administrative staff at Clark would have to have leased space, because they'd be moving out of Clark Road. There wouldn't be any space for them. And there would be transportation costs at about $172,000 annually for all the years, because we couldn't move all those students. We'd have to get additional buses. This line here is a typo. The upshot of that is the leases, because we have Clark, Beacon, Putterham, plus office space for as many as 25 people, we've got $1.8 million, and the operating costs are similar as the K option, which is $318,000. Beep at Beacon moves to Clark. So this would be all five, this option is all five classes moving this fall from Beacon to Clark. The early education center would be built. That's nine or 10 beep classrooms at Clark. The student impact for this upcoming year, okay, is 32 existing students and their families would be impacted for one or two years, depending how long your students will be at Beacon. There's a likelihood of families, as I think was brought up tonight, of families who are at beep Beacon choosing other options than moving over to Clark. It reduces the beep capacity in Coolidge Corner or Beacon, at the same time, growing the capacity in an under-resourced area for beep. It'll take, as I mentioned, it'll take time for beep to build back to its full capacity. We wouldn't expect necessarily that we have nine or 10 classrooms to start next year. Pierce gains the use of the Spurber Education Center. Pierce would consolidate repurposed spaces that we described, as I described earlier. The beep classes currently at Clark don't have to move again. They become part of the early education center. Administrative staff that's there at Clark remains at Clark. And the SEC staff could relocate to Baldwin. Okay? We have to figure out what happens to the Brookline community education, but what that means is we don't need additional, we don't need that much, or maybe at all, any more leased administrative space. So you see there, $1.4 million in terms of leases we'd still be obligated for, and $313,000 in operating costs. And then the two-year transition from beep, which means three Beacon classes would move this fall, and then two remain at Beacon, and then those two would move over to Clark the following year. at BEEP Beacon choosing other options than moving over to Clark. It reduces the BEEP capacity in Coolidge Corner or Beacon, at the same time growing capacity in an under-resourced area for BEEP. It'll take, as I mentioned, it'll take time for BEEP to build back to its full capacity. We wouldn't expect necessarily that we have nine or 10 classrooms to start next year. Pierce gains the use of the spurber education center. Pierce would consolidate repurposed spaces as we described, as I described earlier. The BEEP classes currently at Clark don't have to move again. They become part of the Education Center. Administrative staff that's there at Clark remains at Clark. And the SEC staff could relocate to Baldwin, okay? We have to figure out what happens to the Brooklyn adult education, but what that means is we don't need additional, we don't need that much or maybe at all any more leased administrative space. So you see there, we're pointing $4 million in terms of leases we'd still be obligated for, and $313,000 in operating costs. And then the two-year transition from BEEP, which means three Beacon classes would move this fall, and then two remain at Beacon, and then those two would move over to Clark the following year. The student impact here is a little, is minimal, I don't mean to say that, but the 32 returning students would stay at Beacon. Only challenge there would be if they have entering siblings, and those families may choose to relocate. We're not sure at this point if you have entering siblings, whether or not, and depending what their age is, whether we'd have room. We have only two classrooms, about 32 students, so there might be a challenge with any families who are already at Beacon now, remaining at Beacon, who may have entering siblings. Does that make sense? Okay. It will reduce the capacity in Coolidge Corner, Beacon Street over the two years. BEEP classes at Clark stay where they are. Pierce gains the use of the spurber education center. They have to consolidate repurposed spaces that we talked about. Administrative staff at Clark would consolidate to the third floor. So in this option, we would, again, SEC would move to Baldwin, and we would have very minimal additional leased space needed for administrative offices. In this case, it's $1.5 million for leases across all those buildings. That's the total, our total cost, just like the other ones, and about the same, $303,000 for operating costs. Let me just see, that's a summary of the costs, which you have in your hacket, and taken from each slide, and shows you what we used to have to lease in each option. Do just want to highlight one more thing, is, and then happy to take questions and happy to move on to Melissa. There is an impact of operating costs on our leased, of our leased buildings. Operating costs for any building, but included leased buildings are, you know, utilities, maintenance, cleaning, insurance, IT, playgrounds, snow removal, other DPW services. For most of those, we, we work, you know, the town departments do those, and we have a transfer, okay? The operating costs for leased buildings are removed from PSP's Town School Partnership Revenue allocation. So the amount of money that the schools get from the, from the town, so to speak, okay, I'm simplifying it here, they're removed off the top, okay? Any, any operating costs. So we actually don't see that in that, in that number, or every number we get from the town, okay? If PSP didn't have those operating costs for leased buildings, that number would be higher and could be used for program, service, support, staff, that sort of thing. So there, I do want to just be clear with the school committee that as we have these operating costs here, okay, they do make an impact on our, and if we increase them or lower them, that does have an impact on our, the funds we have to allocate to programs, support services, our, you know, our schools, our schools. So let me pause there, see if you have any questions before we then bring up Melissa so she can explain to you how we're funding the Maimonides lease through the capital improvement project budget. Any questions that I can answer, just before we move on? Okay. I've got no idea. Robin, is her presentation on? Okay. Deputy Town Administrator?
Today.
So, sorry. Melissa Goff is a close colleague. She's the Deputy Town Administrator. Sometimes when you work with someone very closely, you forget what their title is. Sorry. She's a great partner, a vital cog in the town government, and just a wonderful person to work with as well. So she doesn't come in very often. Glad to see you here, and glad that you can help us understand our leases and the capital improvement.
Uh, thank you.
Is that good enough introduction? Okay.
Great, thank you. Thanks for that introduction, Ben. So I'm Melissa Goff from the Deputy Town Administrator. I have been in this role for about five years, and when I looked at, the last time I made this presentation to the school committee, it's been about four years. So right when I started in this role, we gave a little overview to the capital subcommittee. I think Helen was the only one that was there at the time. So good to have new faces, so. It will only be repetitive for one person. So this slide here is just an overview of our budget process. So we kick off our CIP process in July, where we, you know, let departments go to work in terms of generating their requests, engaging with their stakeholders, and all those requests are due to us back in September. And then we spend the majority of the fall reviewing with departments. We have a committee with the finance director, the planning, representative from the planning department, myself, and go through all the departmental budget requests. And so after that, we present a preliminary CIP in the November-December timeframe, and then we have our financial plan coming out next month, which will have the final recommendations for the town administrator's CIP. So the CIP, the core CIP, is our funding policy. So the source of funding for the CIP is 6% of prior year net revenue. That's used from the general fund to help support the CIP. Within that, we have a goal that 4.5% of that is debt, and then 1.5% of that are cash-funded projects. And then on top of that, we use what's called free cash. And free cash is generally, at the end of the year, we go through a process with the Department of Revenue where they certify a number that is identified as surplus that then we can appropriate during the town meeting process. So we generally use free cash to build our CIP. We have a goal to get our CIP at 7.5% of prior year net revenue. And so that's, that's what we use free cash for in addition to other obligations within our fiscal policies. So this is kind of a slide that shows how it works, so you can see the components of the policy. And this is in reality how the debt portion of our policy works. So we have, as part of the 6%, we have non-debt exclusion-related debt in fiscal '21, that will be $12.3 million. And then we have the debt exclusion added on top of that, and then we also have a water and sewer enterprise fund and a golf enterprise fund. So the total of all of those amounts are $24 million in debt for fiscal '21. This just shows a breakout of our debt categories. So you can see that schools, school buildings are the primary source of our fiscal 20 debt. This slide here, you're not going to read, be able to read any of the numbers, but essentially it articulates our debt management plan. So we, we have plans for future projects that we're going to be borrowing for, and this just shows the sequencing of those projects and when the debt service payments will be coming online. And also for the enterprise ones, we also have a similar schedule. This slide here just articulates what we do with our debt. We essentially, as our debt runs off, as we pay existing loans, we're backfilling with other projects that come, that come down. And then we also have, as debt exclusions get paid off, there are others that get layered on top of that as well. This is just another articulation of our 6% policy. So you can see what the policy essentially does is as you take on more debt, there's less cash available. So you can see, I like to point out fiscal '23 in this slide because fiscal '23 is when we are borrowing for the high school. Most of the high school was funded via a debt exclusion, but a piece of the high school is being funded within the levy. And so that puts some pressure on the CIP, but it was a way to lower the amount that we were asking the voters to pay for outside of the levy. So this is the cash portion of the CIP, so we have $10.2 million in cash-funded projects. And so out of that amount, we have 4.5 million coming from the 6% policy, and then we have 8.3 million coming from free cash. We've been fortunate the past few years to have strong free cash certifications. Some of that's been intentional. We've been conservatively budgeting, especially around one-time items that we knew, we knew we shouldn't be building into our operating budget. So the CIP has kind of been the benefactor of those decisions. And then we also have some funding available for, from our parking meter fund. There was a change in law that allowed the fund to be converted to a local receipt, which the balance that was in the fund, we were able to use for one-time purposes, and it has to be spent on transportation-related purposes as well. So this just articulates our funding for free cash. So the first obligation that we have is to make sure that our budget reserve, our, we have a reserve fund that the advisory committee is custodian of, so there are targets around the level of that fund. We are, we look at our unreserved fund balance and stabilization fund, and we are looking to maintain 10% of revenue as a target. So there are recommendations around trying to hit that target. Our liability catastrophe fund also has funding requirements as well. If we draw down via a settlement, we are replenishing the following year, and that's coming from free cash. CIP is part of the funding priorities. That's the 6% policy. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund, once we hit the first four buckets in what we call the waterfall of CIP financing, we, 15% of what's available then goes into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And then after satisfying that as well, we look at other unfunded liabilities that may need some support. So in years past, we've additional funding in pensions, in our other post-employment OPEB account, workers' comp fund in years past as well. So, and it also can go towards additional CIP, which has been consistently the recommendation to bring it above the 7.5% target. So this just shows the, the current CIP for school-related projects, $28.9 million over the six years of the plan. You can see at the bottom of the slide, it's not very legible, but it is available online, and I believe you have the printed copy as well. You can see that the, the CIP has some, the classroom capacity is the last item in this presentation, the bottom line in the report. And so A projects are funded with cash, B projects are bond-funded projects. So you can see that we're using $6.5 million of cash in order to boost the CIP in fiscal '21. And essentially, what I'm trying to do is front-load some of these lease costs because I can't guarantee I'm going to get that same level of free cash in the out-years. So making sure that with the cash that we have on hand, that we're able to properly fund the lease costs with, with all the obligations that we have throughout the rest of the CIP as well. This is a slide that just articulates some of the, the ways that we adjusted the CIP to accommodate the Clark Road lease. So last year, if you looked at the budget document and saw fiscal '21 total, you had $5.7 million under classroom, under CIP for schools. So you can see that the number now in, in the preliminary CIP and what will be in the financial plan is about $11 million. Some of the adjustments that we made, we had the discussions with the select board about the, the lease for Clark Road. I had presented the board with some options that we would be looking at utilizing in order to accommodate the lease costs. And so we made some changes to furniture upgrades, HVAC equipment, money that the building department has around rehabbing of town and school facilities, deferring a few projects. And then we were very limited in being able to accommodate other projects in the CIP. I had a lot of really great requests, but it's, we, you know, we're very compressed this year, especially, you know, we, in addition to accommodating the Clark Road lease, we also had the debt service payment associated with Oak Street property. So that, the combination of those two things really put a lot of pressure on the CIP. So that is a very quick overview, and so I think Mary Ellen said there might be a few questions, so.
If we were wanting additional money to come out of the CIP in order to accommodate additional leases, how would that money, how, where, what magical place would you find that money?
So there is no magical place. There are, there are other projects within the existing CIP that would need a hard look. And I think that there are also other areas, like in the debt plan, that we, that would need a hard look. So for example, we have the, the lease costs, the debt service costs associated with Oak Street. If we let those build, let those condos go and didn't need to pay those lease costs, that would free up funding.
Does that free up free cash or debt?
It free, because like I said, with the 6% policy, the less you borrow, the more cash is available. So if we didn't need to borrow for the condos, that, that debt service payment in '21 and beyond would be available for other projects during the CIP.
Just one other question. I'm sorry, pushing back on this. The income that we get from those properties, that covers some of the debt service.
So we don't know what the income will be after the current terms expire. So we have contracts with the current tenants through April. We will need to go through a procurement process to figure out how much we will be able to generate in rent. At this point, we don't know what that would be until we put them out.
But right now, it covers part of the debt service.
No, it doesn't because they're, it's currently paying for the maintenance costs associated with the properties.
And then my understanding was that some of the terms have moved out. So have there been attempts to release those?
So I think that we need some more direction from both bodies in terms of, you know, whether or not we're going to continue to hold on to these properties. Are we going to be borrowing long-term? We generally borrow in the spring, so we need to know relatively soon whether or not that, that's the plan, and if that's the plan, then we would need to put them out, put them out to bid.
In terms of the leases that are being carried in CIP right now, can you just tell us exactly which one? Clark Road, obviously.
Yeah, so it's Clark Road, Temple Emmeth, and Temple Obay Shalom.
FY21, right.
Yeah, Putterham, Beacon, and Clark Road.
That's in the 6.5.
That's in the 6.5. And the two months that we have to pay for 62 Harvard, because that lease expires in
Just this, the item about furniture upgrades, what does that mean?
That means what was originally scheduled was approximately about, I believe this year was around $150,000. It's been around $100,000, is that we don't have those funds available to replace furniture in our schools or large pieces of equipment. So Matt Gillis, our Director of Operations, has been working with the principals on a replacement cycle for furniture in our buildings. So for example, Runkel is approaching 10 years, and at some point, 10, 15 years, your furniture you bought with the building needs to actually be replaced.
That's been reduced or eliminated?
Reduced.
Reduced, okay. Yeah, good. That's what I thought, just wanted to be clear about that.
And the mini, what Charlie calls, Charlie Simmons calls the mini CIP is unfunded. And there's a couple other pieces that are also unfunded this year.
So for the HVAC equipment, is that related to Driscoll? Because we are not needing to do that HVAC upgrade, so that's.
That's actually a good point. So the HVAC, that's just regular equipment replacement. Charlie would like, you know, a little bit of funding for major pieces that he can replace. But we do also have the Driscoll School HVAC project in the debt plan right now. Unfortunately, that's not a '21 savings because I assumed that we weren't going to be borrowing for that for another year, so it would be savings in '22 and out.
Oh, so that doesn't help. Okay. But then, and too, do you have like Driscoll School on here? That's because in the out-year, you're going to need to take that into account with your debt service, or that's impacting what we're able?
So Driscoll School, we, we have fiscal '19 as the prior year, and so the Driscoll School funding, I mean fiscal '20 was the prior year, so Driscoll School was appropriated in fiscal '20. So we have the, the budget that was voted by town meeting listed there.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions? Yes, Mr. Perlman.
This budget that you are presenting includes, factored into it already, the Beeb on Beacon Street, the five classrooms, is that correct? However, it does not include 62 Harvard Street. Thank you.
No one's participating. Do you need roll call vote to go into executive session? We have need for executive session, so I'm making a motion to meet an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A for Purpose 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. 62 Harvard Street LLC, 62 Harvard Street, Brookline, Massachusetts, Temple, Obay Shalom, 1187 Beacon Street, Brookline, Massachusetts, Maimonides School, 2 Clark Road, Brookline, Massachusetts, and Newberry College, 129 Fisher Ave, Brookline, Massachusetts. Ms. Quinn, if you would take roll call.
Yes.
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 And we will be coming out of executive session, or we will be returning to open session. All right. Let's start with a motion. And then we'll go around to the table for those who want to have discussion on a motion. Does that sound like a good way to do it? Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to instruct the staff to negotiate and finalize the lease for five classrooms at Beeb Beacon, 1187 Beacon Street in Brookline, Massachusetts. Do I have a second of the motion?
I have a second.
Okay. Ms. Arlewski? All right, now, discussion? Does someone want to get us started? Mr. Perlman.
I intend to vote yes to extend the lease for five classrooms for Beeb on Beacon. I think that Beeb is a tremendously important program. We have very high demand for Beeb in the Coolidge Corner neighborhood. I do not think that we should be reducing capacity in that area of town at this time. Also, it had already been built into the CIP budget, so with their, I see no need to be removing something we already budgeted for. I would like to see five classrooms in that neighborhood in perpetuity. I think it's very important we maintain it, so that's why I'm going to be voting yes.
Okay. Ms. Monopoly?
Either way, go ahead, Ms. Monopoly.
I agree. I think that that area is incredibly dense area, very walkable, very accessible. In addition to public education, the environment and green issues are very close to my heart, so this is a nice pairing. It's an incredible program. We've heard a lot of feedback, and so I agree that I support having Beeb classrooms at Beacon or in the Beacon area.
Mr. Glover.
I agree with what's been said. I mean, I think that I have a lot of affinity for Beeb on Beacon. Both my children went to Beeb on Beacon. It's a great program. The Trust Center and the Temple are great partners. I think the voice of the community was important in thinking about this, and I think it was pretty loud and clear as to sort of what the view in the community was for Beeb on Beacon, and I'm happy to support the motion.
Ms. Fetterishville?
I plan to vote yes on this motion. I want to thank Regina for all her help. There's been lots of ups and downs. We've tried everything, from one to none, to three, to two, to four, to five. I'm settling on five. I do think the program's extremely important to our community, and I want to say thank you to all the teachers and to Regina for an excellent program. So thank you for that.
I'll go next. I think that one of the things that we've thought a lot about as we've discussed the use of the Clark Road site is, are the students in the RISE program who are currently there. We have a RISE classroom at the Clark Road program, and so we've talked about different options and things that might happen with respect to the Maimonides lease. You know, it has been incredibly important to me to really think about those families in the RISE program who are there, especially children of that young age, and who are there at that program, and that that program is incredibly important to them. And we have a similar program at Beeb on Beacon. And I would hope that those families and town meeting members who have come and strongly supported the need to maintain the Beeb on Beacon space, and to think about the impact that a transition would have on the families at Beacon if that site were to be closed, to really think about the impact that it would have on the families who are at the Clark Road site if that program were closed. And I think that that is incredibly important, and I hope that as we go into the coming months and think about the use of Clark Road going forward, I really hope that some of the voices we've heard on this will step up and speak strongly on that as well. And so that's what I have to add up.
So I too plan to vote yes on this, and I agree with what everybody said, especially also what Julie has said. For me, this was a very difficult decision. Part of it was financial, thinking about what made sense. I do know it was in the budget. But on the other hand, also, I do know how many times, and I've been around for all the times, that we've moved Beeb from one building to another building to another building, taken it out of the elementary schools. It's been really hard, and I know that. I know it's been hard on the staff. I know it's been hard on the director, both Vicky and Regina. So I think it's going to be hard, you know, finding money in the budget, in the CIP, to fund all these things that we want to do, but I think that this is the right choice to keep it.
So I intend to vote yes for a fully capacitated Beeb on Beacon. Speaking personally as a parent, knowing how precarious sort of the experience is of trying to find childcare, not only for your various children as your career is sort of growing, but children with special needs in an environment like this one, the statements that were made by the community, both educators and families, was just very compelling for me. I do want to add, though, that a concern that I've had ever since I joined the school committee is that I don't think that leasing itself demonstrates a meaningful commitment to Beeb, and that Beeb, the Beeb program, has been, you know, very much subject to the precarious whims of budgetary requirements and so on because of its leasing situation. And so I will never vote to agree to moving Beeb away from the general location where it is, but I do believe that over the long term, the school committee should be making a commitment to trying to find permanent digs in that neighborhood, and preferably larger ones. So that's my position.
I guess before we vote, I didn't say that I will be abstaining from the vote on this, and that the reasoning for my abstaining is not because I have not heard and understand the value of this location to the families who are there, but just as I have this tremendous concern about the budget and impacts that we will see, and I think that I need to abstain as a statement, that I do not think that this means that we can close the Maimonides location. And so I will be abstaining, and then that's my reasoning for that. Is anything further? Yes, Mr. Perlman.
I would like to reiterate the chair's point about making sure that we also protect the Beeb community at Clark Road. I don't want this vote to be viewed as pitting one community against another. The community at Clark Road is equally as important, and they have very important needs as well. That actually is a walkable neighborhood for those who live around there. And so for that reason, I do hope that we also, that we respect the future of Beeb at Clark Road.
I would also like to just make one more point about process. I know that I, as a school committee member, have learned something very significant about how to implement an effective process for consulting with all of our stakeholders, and especially our parent community. And I hope that never again will we consider a major capital decision in such a short time period, you know, and giving families and staff such short notice. I hope we'll never do that again. I mean, it's not a good way to do school governance, and I feel personally committed to making sure that we just don't do that.
Okay. With that, we have a motion and a second on the table. We don't need to take a roll call vote, so all of those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? All right, so with a vote of 1, 2, 3, 6 to 0 to 1, the motion passes. The second motion that I'll be making is a motion to instruct staff to notify the landlord at 62 Harvard, I think that's the quote, at 62 Harvard, that the school department will not be exercising the extension language of the current lease. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion on this motion. Mr. Perlman.
I'm going to be voting no. I'm sorry, I'm going to be voting yes on not renew the lease. And the reason for that is actually quite similar for my explanation on previous vote. We had the lease for Beeb on Beacon already budgeted in. However, our CIP budget assumed with Maimonides that we were not going to be renewing the lease at 62 Harvard Street. And while ideally, I would love to be expanding space at Pierce if possible, I also think that it's fiscally irresponsible for us to be adding to a structural deficit that we already have without being able to identify funds from which to make a corresponding cut. And I regret that we have to make this decision in a rush. We have literally a little, just a little bit over a week in order to instruct the landlord about what to do with the property. I wish we had more time, but I think that it's a sound fiscal principle to not be adding to one's deficit before a corresponding cut is going to be made. I am also encouraged by the presentation that we had today about options for finding the four classrooms and smaller learning space that we will need in order to accommodate for the loft of 62 Harvard Street. It looks like we're going to be able to have some classroom consolidation, which could open up a classroom or two. Also, with the Spurder Center being utilized for Pierce, which it's not currently, that would be an additional two classrooms, so it's possible we get the four classrooms right there. So I'm hopeful, and I trust our administration and our school leadership at Pierce that will find a way to work. I have heard from the Pierce community that it's extremely important to keep everyone together, at least close to that area, and I respect that. I don't want to be going against the will of the Pierce community as a whole. So I understand I'm threading the needle here a little bit in terms of opposing the extension of the 62 Harvard lease, but this does keep the Pierce community together, which I heard loud and clear.
Mr. Glover.
I also will be voting yes on this to not extend the lease at 62 Harvard. This is not an easy decision to make. To David's point, I think a lot of it comes down to the exceptional pressure that there is on the CIP. And it's, but that's buttressed by the fact that we've heard from staff to a degree that's made me comfortable that the space needed can be found and can be made to work. It is not, I don't say that lightly or flippantly. I mean, Pierce is still an incredibly crowded community, overly so, and this isn't an easy decision to make, like I said, but I feel we have to offset that, we have to offset the challenges that we have in the CIP, and this is a way to do it in a way that is workable.
Ms. Fetterishville?
I am voting no on this motion. I believe that Pierce does need some relief, and the loft would be the right move. So I'm not trying to be fiscally irresponsible, but I do believe that we could find the right My children went to Pierce, I have a special place in my heart for Pierce, I must say, and it's doubled in size since my children were there. And so I just know that it is so very overcrowded, and feel that the loft works well for the number of children that we have there.
So I will be voting yes on the motion, and, you know, I won't repeat what has been said, but I agree 100% with what Mr. Perlman and Mr. Glover have said, and I, you know, just as I had really hoped that the Maimonides and the Clark Road lease would really provide relief to Pierce, but as the staff and the school leadership had a chance to really look at the schedule and to evaluate it, they came to the determination that that's not something that worked in a way that it really helped Pierce, how they would like and how we would like. And so, and then through the process, as we considered other alternatives, and we heard from the community, the staff and Leslie Ryan Miller really just have spent so much time and energy and really put their heads together, and in discussions with Mr. Lummis about how to make it work and what to make work best for the Pierce community with all of the factors that we were considering. And they really did that hard work, and they were able to come up with a list of ways to accommodate a no-move scenario that did not involve the loft. And, you know, I think it was said at one of the Capitol Subcommittee meetings, was just that they were kind of surprised that they were able to find ways that they're not ideal. I mean, considering something like losing the computer lab is not an ideal situation, but unfortunately, it is where we are at in all of our schools right now. And so with the realities of where we are with the space crunch, we're having to make that move or consider that move for Pierce as well. And I appreciate everything that's being done, and I really appreciate, appreciated hearing the feedback from the staff as we made this decision and from the school leaders as we made this decision. And so, you know, hearing from them, I do feel comfortable that they will be able to make it work without the loft space. And I hope as we move forward with the MSBA process that we're really able to provide the correct kind of relief for Pierce in the near future. And then I also hope, and it hasn't been said here at the table, so I want to say it, is that it is our hope and our, you know, request that we have made to Mr. Lummis and to his staff to try to keep that incoming kindergarten class at four, and to talk about ways that we can help try to make that happen, maybe doing some things differently than we've done in the past. And so I would also, in addition to the other thing that we're considering, would ask that they consider that as well, as an and. And for all of those reasons, I'll be voting yes on this motion.
So, I, I'm going to try and be brief, because everybody has said everything that I wanted to say. I will be voting yes on this motion, and I, I do understand the difficulty, I, I certainly do, but on the other hand, I think we need to be fiscally prudent as much as we can. So, I will be voting yes.
Okay. Ms. Monopoly?
I am very concerned about the space at Pierce. I understand that the community there is very overcrowded, like all, like many, all of our schools. At the same time, we're faced with significant budget issues that I think the community is well aware of. So, I find myself in a very difficult position in a short timeline of having to make a decision about what to do with the Pierce loft lease. There is a plan to utilize the space at Pierce without the use of loft, and it's important to me to keep the Pierce community together. I've heard that loud and clear. And I don't have the information that I need about where this money is going to come from. It was, it is not in our, is not currently in our budget plans, and I would need to know where that comes from. And when we were having conversations about where cuts are going to come from in our schools, I, I don't have all the information. I need to say that yes, we can afford to take on this lease when there is a reasonable plan to utilize this space within Pierce. So, I am very frustrated at having to make this decision, and so I'm abstaining because I feel like I do not have the information I need to make an educated decision that I can sleep with at night.
So, I'll be voting no against the motion. I, I took a rather strong position on this. I would like to correct a previous statement made by interim Superintendent Lummis, that there was a unanimous vote on whether or not to pursue Clark Road over, in the month of July. It was not a unanimous decision. I did vote against it principally because I was concerned that we hadn't done our due diligence in terms of process, in terms of consulting with our administrators at the school level, and consulting with our families, and having a meaningful understanding of what the impact that a move like this would have meant, a move, the move of some grades in the Pierce community over to Clark would mean for those children, families, and educators. I was also concerned because at the time, I had the sense that what we were trying to do was effectively build something, acquire something close to a two-section school within a budget that didn't allow for additional funds for operations or for capital for that school. And I was concerned that that, that that funding was going to come out on the backs of our schools. Now, here we are, quite a few months later, and after much deliberation, and I want to say, I really respect the choices of all of my colleagues on the school committee here, but I believe that we have taken space away from Pierce inappropriately. We made a decision in July to not renew loft space on the assumption that children would be moving into the building and other children would be moving out of it. That assumption no longer pertains. Even with the wizardry of the Pierce administration, I know that it's going to be inordinately hard on children and teachers to make this work, even if it's only for a few years until we impose some other enormous burden on them in anticipation of MSBA funding. And I thought that in anticipation of that, we should at least try to bridge that and provide stability, continuity, and community to, to the Pierce community. I am also a member of this, of the Finance Subcommittee. I believe that as a result of all of these budgetary presentations, I have a meaningful understanding of our finances, and I do believe that the responsibility is incumbent on the school committee to make the money work and not try to find the funding on the backs of students. That being said, I'm going to cast a respectful vote no. I'm very, I'm very much looking forward to the future for the Pierce community and for the entire Brookline Public School community, and we have another vote to get to, so I will stop talking.
So, with that, on the motion, all of those in favor, and I can reread the motion in case anyone needs, a motion to instruct the staff to notify the landlord at 62 Harvard that the school department will not be exercising the extension language of the current lease. All of those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? So, a vote of four to two to one, that motion carries. And then, we have a third motion, a motion to instruct the staff, excuse me, sorry, a motion to instruct the staff to expand the District Y BEEP program by adding BEEP classrooms at Two Clark Road. Do I have a second for the motion? Mr. Perlman? All right. Is there discussion on this motion? How about we start on the other side of the table this time? Ms. Monopoly?
I'm sorry.
If you have, you don't have to have anything to say if you don't want.
No, I am very, I'm actually really excited about the idea of utilizing Clark, Clark Road for additional BEEP classrooms. It's a space made for this purpose, for young people, the play equipment, the spaces, it's a beautiful space. I want children in that space. That's a priority for me. I think it's important. It's an important program. I don't want to go on for too long, but we, I, I think many of us know the value of early education and the, the life of a, of a young student as a learner, as they grow, and how important early education is. And so, making, and it's a value statement to encourage that program, and that's important to me. So, it's a nice mix of that space and a program that is important. So, I am in favor.
So, I'm going to say that I'm in favor. I think that, I'm incredibly excited, actually, about the prospect of filling up 15 classrooms with little kids, and given our extraordinary, am I, that's right, right? I mean, give, 16 classrooms, given our extraordinary.
16 classrooms.
Oh, yeah. Given our extraordinary BEEP leaders and our BEEP educators and the families that comprise the BEEP community, I just think that it's a really exciting day to be able to say that, hey, guess what, guys? We're expanding BEEP. We're expanding BEEP substantially in a neighborhood that hasn't had access to BEEP in a really long time. This is going to serve the Brunkel community, it's going to serve the Lincoln community, it's going to serve the Pierce communities, and anybody else who wants to drive down Route Nine or take the back roads, come on in. We've got a lot of classrooms opening up. So, this is a really exciting day for us. I'm really happy that we, as a committee, came together around making sure that we're building out our early education program in the best possible way, and I believe we all have a long-term commitment to seeing, you know, permanent capacity established for an expansion of, of early education.
I think Sharon said it very well. I'm very excited about it. I think there are 10 classrooms, though, but that's okay.
Vote for now.
Vote for now. And I think it's, I think it's really important for those families that, that came over from Driscoll in the middle of the summer and really put themselves out to not move that program, and, and also for the Rise Kids to not be moved out of Clark Road. I think it would be really short-sighted to do that, and bad to do that.
So, I, I agree with everything that has been said. I also would like to, you know, state again my strong commitment to maintaining our lease at Two Clark Road, and one of the speakers had said today that we should just, you know, not, we should not fund this lease, and we should not move forward to it with it, and that that would be without penalty. And I just wanted to talk about that for a moment, and that, first, I already spoke earlier about the penalty and the cost that it would have to the families that are there in that program, to our students in our Rise program who are there in our, that program, but also to think about our community partner. When we, when we entered into the lease with Maimonides, they significantly discounted the first year of the lease because of the financial situation that the district was in. And they substantially discounted the lease in the first year with the understanding that we would then be paying market rate for the continuing years of the lease. And I believe that it would be in bad faith for us to have taken that first year and then to say, yeah, you know, we change our mind, and, and we're not, we're not going to find the money to, to maintain, you know, to meet the commitment that we made to you. And so, I think that it is not without penalty to that community partner. I think it would not be without penalty to the reputation of the town and how the town is willing to do business with other partners in our town, and that we might be willing to just, you know, with a wink and a nod, not fund something that, that we had committed to funding, that advisory had committed to funding, that the Select Board had committed to funding, that the school committee had committed to funding, and that we have, in fact, found money in our CIP to fund, and that we might consider not funding that commitment, I think would have long-term penalties to the town of Brookline and other individuals' willingness to do business with us. And this language that's in this lease that might allow Town Meeting a loophole to get around the commitments of the lease is something that's statutorily required in all of our contracts. And so, that's in our contract with our busing company, it's in our contract with other landlords that we have, it's in contracts that we have with food service providers, and, and the type of message that we would be sending to anyone who would like to do business with the town of Brookline, I think has serious penalty. And so, again, I want to return to the students and say that that's my real number-one priority is what it would mean for those students and the families, and the uncertainty that they would be facing thinking about this maybe not being funded. And so, I hope that, you know, just as, as Town Meeting considers whether this is something that they want to consider or not, that, that we really think through what kinds of penalties would happen if we didn't meet our commitments.
Ms. Fetterspiel?
So, I'm going to vote yes. I'm supporting this motion. I, too, am very excited about the opportunity for the BEEP program to be expanded. I do want to say thank you to, again, Regina and to her staff and all the families who were the pioneers and went over to Clark Road before anybody knew if it was going to work. So, now we've had a whole, well, half a year so far under our belt, and we know that it's a wonderful facility. So, we would really like to fill as many spaces as we can, so just let your friends and neighbors and relatives know that we are accepting applications for the Clark Road facility. That means that we need your support, as we've been saying, so that we can keep this facility going and offer these classrooms to as many families as want to take advantage of the program. So, thank you in advance to all of you who are going to help us get new enrollees over at Clark Road. As you know, those of you who are the BEEP families know how important the program is. So, thank you for that.
Mr. Le. Can I add?
I will just briefly say I'm going to support this as well. I think it's, there's a tremendous amount of utility in this building, and despite everything that's gone on around the discussion of this building, this is a, this is a great way to make use of it. There may be other ways that we can make use of it as well, but I think this is a really great opportunity. This is, this is a, a part of town that hasn't had a lot of, a lot of BEEP opportunities in recent years, so it's, it's an underserved community in that sense, and it'll be great to be able to provide this, and we look forward to filling as many classrooms as we can.
Mr. Perlman?
My colleagues have covered just about all the reasons why this is an excellent opportunity to expand the program at the Clark Road facility. I don't really have much to add beyond what's already been stated. I'm wholeheartedly going to support this.
Yes.
I also want to say that we've listened very, we all heard from the, from the Beacon Street community how important it was to have after care, after-school care, and holiday time, and summer coverage, and I think that, I, I don't want to speak for my colleagues here, but I believe that there is a common consensus on this school committee, that that is very, very important to replicate at the Clark Road facility. Now, the details of how that's going to happen, and the, the magic that Regina's going to have to work in order to make it happen, is, is something that unfortunately, I'm not responsible for, but we hear you, we understand that, that a BEEP program that ends at 12:15 only meets like a third of your needs, and that we, and that for, that a full BEEP program needs to be more, and, and we care about that.
And just too, for all of those who are taking Ms. Fetterspiel's message and sharing with their friends and family, we do, there is currently extended day at that location as well, but just thinking about other ways to emulate programs that have been successful in other places of town to provide, you know, wraparound services or other amenities. So, again, get the word out there, and extended day is, is available, and we do hope to expand the offerings that we have. All right. So, on that, we have a motion on the table. We're going to vote on that, vote on it. All of those in favor? And that's unanimous. So, we will be, are we moving on with that? Oh, yes, okay. Yep, Mr. Lummis.
I just want to say a few things. First of all, just, this is, these are important decisions. Before I go any further, I do want to just call out Ms. Trelefsky, who has been an ardent and passionate and convincing fan and advocate for BEEP for many, many years in so many ways, and I'm, I'm very pleased, just for you, to see a real expansion in BEEP. It's a great moment, so thank you for your many years of, of supporting BEEP.
Thank you.
Yeah. The, the second thing I really want to say is, you know, whether it's our teachers in our classrooms, our school leaders, you know, our, our clerks, our, our central office folks, Matt Gillis, who can charge operations, you know, in every one of those roles, every day is a balancing act. You know, a teacher's trying to balance all the needs of his or her students, a, a school leader and vice principals are balance, trying to balance all the needs of their whole community, their staff, their children, their families. And, and school committee is trying to balance very difficult, you know, variables and, and factors on any of these decisions. And I, I just want to assure the, the community that this was very well-considered. They aren't easy answers, they aren't perfect answers, but it really is a challenging balancing act to meet the needs of, of any community, and this community in particular. So, I'm very, very excited, although my exhaustion isn't showing it very much, for the, for the BEEP at Beacon families, I'm, I'm very excited about being able to build Clark Road and really create, you know, a BEEP center there, so to speak. I do understand and want to acknowledge, you know, the Pierce community, and that the changes will happen there, as they have been at, at Pierce and, and many schools for a long time now. On all those school communities, we are absolutely committed to supporting teachers and families and administration and leaders to make sure that we do a great job on this. You know, the heavy, heavy lifting begins here. I'm fully confident that those leaders and our support and those teachers will continue to offer the very best to our families, and we have a good path forward here. I thank the committee for having such a well-reasoned and well-thought-out discussion, conversation, deliberations about this, and also thank you for the clear direction. We need to have clear direction on this. We can go forward from here, and we will make, you know, as we always do, make the best of these opportunities, so thank you.
Are on to Subcommittee and Liaison Reports, and I feel like a brokered record at all of our meetings this year in just really trying to, to keep us moving along, so just to keep that in mind as we're giving reports. But we haven't done them in a while, so we will do them tonight despite the late hour. Ms. Wolfdikoff is not here from Finance. Do we want, we did have a Finance meeting. Does it make sense to have it, or, well, we'll just bump, we'll bump Finance to, since we're meeting next Thursday, we will bump Finance to next Thursday. Capital, we've spent a lot of time on Capital tonight. Ms. Charlottefsky, do you need, do you have anything in addition?
Yeah, just, quickly, no, very quickly, it's good stuff. Even though nobody's listening anymore.
We're listening, go.
So, Driscoll met this morning, the Driscoll School Building Committee, and I would, I think what's, what's exciting is the architects listened to a lot of the issues that people brought up and have addressed a number of them, including the placement of the cafeteria, including a number of issues that, that were problematic, costly, whatever. So, I think that's moving well, and so I'm pleased to report out on that.
Thank you.
We will have a short. We will have a.
We will have a short update ducketed next week and also just a matter of discussion, but including that discussion about parking and whatnot. We'll give you a quick update on some of those details that Charlebsky's talking about.
And we will be meeting the second Tuesday of next month.
Government relations, Ms. Charlebsky?
Apparently, I just found out from Lisa Sears, who was here, Senator Cream's liaison staff person, that the budget is, the governor's budget is out, that there's a slight increase for Brookline. Fifteen million was the amount that I saw as the actual number. I'm not sure how much of that, huh? Okay. A one and a half percent increase. We were hoping for more. And I don't know, is it one and a half percent from last year is what you're saying? Thank you. So, better than an increase than a decrease. The other piece to keep in mind, usually the governor, usually, not always, the governor's budget is the floor, not the ceiling of what Chapter 70 comes out to be. This may be a different year, but that's what has happened in the past.
Policy?
Policy will be meeting on, next on February 10th. We haven't met in a while due to conflicts. The agenda's, I don't know, not fully developed yet.
And then Superintendent Search Process.
The Superintendent Search Process is ongoing. The Search Committee as well as the Superintendent Search Public Advisory Committee, which are the members of the public that are helping us, will be meeting again next Tuesday, I believe, for a workshop. We'll be talking a lot about how, what we're looking for out of a superintendent and what kinds of interview process and questions that we want to develop. We do have a, internally, we're sort of, we have a draft profile of a candidate, an ideal candidate that we're working through as well, and we'll be doing that next week as well.
Mr. Glover, can you give us an update on to timeline? Have you, where are you with receiving resumes, reviewing resumes?
So, we're still in the resume-receiving process. This, this next meeting, we won't be reviewing resumes, but I hope that we'll be reviewing resumes at the, in the following week. I forget the exact date of that meeting. Resume review will happen in an executive session. It will not be an open session.
And then, is there a deadline for submitting resumes?
There is no deadline. There is a date by which we are, when we're gonna, obviously, we're gonna start reviewing the week after next, but folks who are interested, if they're out there and happen to be watching this at this hour and are qualified, should.
If they're watching our school committee meeting at 11:00 PM, I'm not sure what that says about them.
Yeah, you should, you should certainly apply. But there is no deadline. We will keep looking until we find great candidates.
Great. Then, any liaison reports? Seeing none?
Just wanted to bring up, highlight the February 8th Pan Asian Lunar New Year Festival at Brookline High School from three to five. I will be there volunteering. I encourage you all to come, community members to come. It is free and open to all. It is family-friendly. It'll be a lovely afternoon, so please come and celebrate with us.
BFAC met last night. They were going over the, sort of the final draft of what they'd like to present to the Select Board. The draft is going to be presented to the Select Board formally on February 4th. It's been made very clear to me and reiterated multiple times, it's very important to the members of BFAC that as many of us as possible attend that meeting on the evening of February 4th at the Select Board. I'm not sure exactly what time it's going to be on the Select Board agenda. Once I find that out, I'll share that information with you. Also, there will likely be conversations with individual members of BFAC at the Finance Subcommittee Meetings and possibly before School Committee as a whole moving forward as the role for BFAC is envisioned to transition somewhat to more of an educational function with some of the members explaining, visualize implementing some of the recommendations that have been outlined in their draft.
I'm not sure that it would impact or influence their agenda in any way whatsoever, but perhaps if you could see if there is a possibility of having it earlier in the agenda, that because there's a Curriculum Subcommittee meeting that's from four to six, what do we, four to 5:30 or four to six? Four to six, that I imagine many of the School Committee members would be present at. If it's early in the, very early in the agenda, that might make it more likely for School Committee members to be able to attend.
All right, that makes a lot of sense. I'll talk to them about that.
All right, any new business? Okay, Ms. Fetterspiel? Is, are we putting a pin in something different?
No, we're putting the pin back in to make sure everybody knows that I really.
So, no, we're good.
So it doesn't explode, so I don't forget. I really want us to take a look sometime soon on the, the number of minutes that our students are receiving Science and Social Studies in the K-5 program. I think it's critical that we address this ASAP.
Okay. And a different pin?
That was my pin. That's really important. It's a conversation I want to have. I also would like to bring back the conversation that some students came and talked about, the climate change curriculum and our science curriculum, and I'd also like to resurface conversations about understanding more and having consistency across our site councils and how goals are being determined at site councils and what directions they're being given. So, I just want to surface those as concerning topics I think are somewhat urgent.
All right. So, we will not be going, we did have scheduled another executive session, but considering the late hour tonight, we will not be going into further executive session this evening. And so, that brings us to the end of our meeting for tonight.
Motion to reconsider, we keep canceling this and I would really appreciate an update personally. Motion to reconsider not going into proposed executive session on the BEU negotiations. We've canceled several of them. I would just really appreciate an update.
All right, so we can have, if the members are wanting an update, we can have an update. We will not be reconvening into open session. Do you need a motion to go? Okay. And we need roll call to go into executive session? Oh, I have to read it. Oh, my lord. Motion to meet an executive session pursuant to mass general laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Brookline Educators Union, BEU, Unit A, Unit B and paraprofessionals. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares.